2025 regular meeting of the Hawthorne City Council is called to order at 6:12 PM. Pastor John L. Jefferson will be doing the invocation, and I'm going to ask Mr. Balboa if you could please do the Pledge of Allegiance, sir.
Brother Mayor, Council, and fellow residents of Hawthorne, please bow with me as we pray. To you who are ancient of days, Creator and Designer, the great and grand architect of our universe, you who crafted us in the palms of your hand, you who've given us life, liberty, we gather in this chamber to seek your guidance and your insight. We ask that as you guide us this evening, we ask that you guide the elected officials of our city to do the best that they can to act in the best interest of our community. We ask you to help our community and its residents to be supportive of the work and the will that is being shared in this place. We pray for the prosperity of our businesses and our community partners. We pray for the prosperity of every family. We pray for the unity of our community. And as we gather in this chamber, we honor you because you have honored us to be in this community. And as we gather here in unity, we gather to grow together, to walk together, to stand together, to build upon our strengths together. And as we gather here, we say thank you for the administrative staff who bring forth their skills and their abilities to lay out plans and architect the work that needs to be done for our community. We come to say thank you to our police and to our fire departments for their putting their lives on the line each and every day just for us. And we come to say thank you. Because of you, we were able to gather and receive all of your awesome blessings. And so as we close, we ask you to continue to allow unity flow through us, to allow your peace to surround us, and that your arms may guide us to him that is ancient and stronger than all of us. Lead us into a better tomorrow, beginning with our today. Amen.
Amen. Please stand up. Before we do the Pledge of Allegiance, we would like to salute the police officers and veterans of the armed forces of this nation. So face our flag, place your right hand, right hand over your heart and be grateful.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
Thank you, guys, for your service. Appreciate all the sacrifice that have been made for our country, for our community, so that we could be here and, you know, be able to enjoy freedom that we enjoy. So, the roll call, please?
Councilmember Johnson.
President.
Councilmember Manning. Councilmember Reyes English.
Here.
Mayor Protem Montero.
Resident.
Mayor Vargas.
Here. Okay, so let me see, let me see. We have five items today, so we just want to remind those presenters that we have a 10-minute limit. Ideally, if you can even have it more concise, that would be best, because we have a moderate agenda today. It's not heavy, but still. So I'm gonna call, okay, Fay Johnson, go ahead with your presentation. Councilwoman?
Thank you. We did do the reading of the proclamations last time, but we weren't able to actually present them to the pastor and his church. So we're gonna read them one more time for the record, and then we're gonna ask that Pastor Jefferson and his fellow church members come up. Pastor John L. Jefferson has faithfully served as the spiritual leader of Del Air Baptist Church in the city of Hawthorne, California, providing guidance, inspiration, an unwavering dedication to his congregation and the greater community. Under Pastor Jefferson's leadership, Del Air Baptist Church has been a beacon of hope, compassion, and service, offering not only spiritual nourishment, but also vital outreach programs, community support, and educational initiatives that have uplifted countless lives. He has demonstrated an extraordinary commitment to faith, family, and community through decades of pastoral leadership, mentoring, counseling, and advocacy. His deep and moral integrity, tireless service, and heart of ministry have earned him the admiration and respect of church members, fellow clergy, civic leaders, and citizens throughout the city of Hawthorne. Pastor John Jefferson's legacy is not only, I'm sorry, there's a glare, not only found within the walls of Del Air Baptist Church, but also in the many lives he has touched, the families he has strengthened, and the community he has helped to build. The city of Hawthorne now hereby recognizes and commends Pastor John L. Jefferson for his outstanding service, faithful leadership, lasting contributions to the spiritual and civic life of our city. We extend our deepest gratitude and blessing for his continued health, strength, and purpose as he continues to serve. I'm gonna read this real quick so we can do all the pictures at the same time. This one's going, this proclamation is going out to Del Air Baptist Church. In 1945, that was 80 years ago, Del Air Baptist Church was founded in the heart of the South Bay as a house of worship, a refuge of the community, and a spiritual foundation for families in Hawthorne and the surrounding areas. For 80 years, Del Air Baptist Church has faithfully served the community by offering worship, discipleship, outreach, and unwavering support to generations of individuals seeking hope, healing, and faith. The church has been a place not only for spiritual growth, but also a pillar of compassion, supporting education, youth development, food distribution, family counseling, and building partnerships that strengthen the social fabric of our city. Under the current leadership of Pastor John L. Jefferson, the Del Air Baptist Church continues to thrive as a welcoming congregation devoted to worship, service, and making a meaningful impact on the community. The members of Del Air Baptist Church have consistently lived out that mission through acts of kindness, faith, and justice. The city of Hawthorne is proud to honor and congratulate Del Air Baptist Church for, on the occasion of its 80th anniversary, we extend a heartfelt appreciation for the steadfast presence, moral leadership, and enduring contributions to the spiritual and civic life of our city. Thank you, guys. And if we could have the church come up?
To the chair. I just wanted to say a couple of words before we go and take a picture. Pastor Jefferson has been in this city for such a long time, and I will have to say that I commend him because he has had some health challenges during the time he's been here, but that has not kept him from showing up for the city of Hawthorne. If he's in a wheelchair, he's on a cane, he got people holding on to him, he continues to show up for us every single time. So I just wanted to say that I am so grateful to be able to be a part of recognizing you and the work that you've done, and you continue to do the work. No matter what the storm you're facing, you're still here, you're still standing, and I'm so happy to see that you're not on a cane today, you're not in a wheelchair. Let's give it up for him. Thank you so much.
I'll wait till we come back from our photos.
To the chair. And before you leave, let me just say, Pastor Jefferson, such an honor and such a man of God, and with your deacons and church membership, your loyalists, I can't say enough. In the years that we've known each other and collaborated together, I've known you as a foster parent, I've known you as a contributor to many causes, and I just have to commend you and say, job well done. Faithful, faithful servant. Absolutely. To the community and all that you've done, you're worthy and more. And so, God bless you, your family, your wife, your daughter, because they're just right there next to you doing the same, helping wherever they can. And so, I'm glad that Councilmember Johnson recognized you on this day and your celebration of some 80 years of church services here to the community and to many from all over LA County. So thank you so much.
So like I said on that Sunday, it was such a beautiful sermon over there with your former colleague coming and preach. And like I said, you have been a blessing to Hawthorne. So I met you 25 years ago, right? And we have done so much stuff, from the Hawthorne School District for the foster care, the CFS. You every week continue to serve thousands and thousands of food and families, you know, giving food every week, every Friday, you know, tons of food have you give away. And then with your vision, like you said, that you guys are gonna be one of those centers that's gonna have like EV chargers, a place where people can go when the weather is rough. So you've been there for them. And especially to me, one of the great achievements is about bringing the father to be responsible for their children, because you have brought, you know, young men that didn't have no connection with their children and reunite them together. So it has been a blessing, and you continue to do it every single day, like Councilwoman Katrina said, with your challenge. But God said, it's not your time, though we need you here even for another 25 years preaching, okay? God bless.
Just one more thing. Pastor, I had the opportunity to serve a couple of Saturdays ago with Ms. Betty. She be cracking the whip. There was no time for kissing babies and shaking hands, none of that. You were boxing food, you were getting food out, and it was just such joy to see how many people came through and the amount of food that you gave away, just on the day that I was there. And it was just to the walk-ins, I was helping with the walk-ins. And the food is very quality food, and it's not cheap boxes, they are full of food. So, and I saw a couple of you guys working, so I thank you guys very much because I live in that community, and we need that kind of involvement from our churches. So thank you.
All right, we have a second presentation, bulky items. What to do with the bulky items presentation? We just need a reminder, that's for sure. All right. DJ Torado and Jose Ibarra.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, Councilmembers, and Hawthorne staff and residents. My name is DJ Torado, Associate Traffic Engineer for the Public Works Department, along with Jose Ibarra, our Plan Coordinator, and we will be presenting about bulky item pickup and illegal dumping in the city. So we're gonna go over what are bulky items, what is illegal dumping, current services that the city has to address these issues, city events that we hold, and also future services that we are planning to do to combat this issue. And I will turn it over to Jose to discuss about bulky items.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, and residents of Hawthorne. So let's see what, let's get this party started. What are bulky items?
Yes. All right, Jose.
What are bulky items? There are large household items, appliances, and objects that are too big to fit into a regular trash bin, such as furniture, such as chairs, sofas, box springs, mattresses, appliances such as refrigerators, washers, dryers, water heaters, dishwashers, and household items like mirrors, doors, and rugs. So how to schedule bulky item pickups? Each multifamily building greater than five units and residential customers are entitled to a collection of up to five bulky items four times per year, so 20 bulky items per calendar year. calendar year. Bulky items must be placed on the curb only after you call to arrange a pickup. To arrange a pickup, you could call Republic Services at 888-742-5234. Some of the items that are not picked up are hazardous materials, oil, car oil, motor oil, antifreeze, or oversized items. Oversized items are any item that two people cannot lift. So bulky item schedule days. The red area, which are the areas of northwest Hawthorne, northeast Hawthorne, Ramona, Burley, Monita Gardens, and the airport, and Memorial Park, our pickups are Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. The green areas, which are Holly Glen, Holly Park, Potter Park, are Thursdays. Now DJ will talk about what is illegal dumping.
So illegal dumping is any improper unauthorized disposal of unwanted trash, bulky items, or hazardous materials in the areas around the city. So usually you can find these in empty lots, alleys, the railroad right-of-way, or sidewalks. And unreported incidents contribute to a cycle of repeat offenses. This leads to the accumulation of trash, debris, and waste. So why is illegal dumping a problem? It damages our environment by causing pollution of our land and water. There's a lot of health risks involved with illegal dumping, a lot of harmful bacteria, it's hazardous to people, especially children. There's a lot of economic costs associated with illegal dumping, because it wastes taxpayer money, because we have to deal with illegal dumping and pick up all this trash, and it also disrupts our local economy. And obviously, it degrades our community, because it lowers property values, and it makes all these areas unsightly with all this trash. So this is the typical illegal dumping schedule the city has. The green area is on Mondays, the purple area to the right is on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, the blue area is on Thursdays, and a lot of the alleys are on Fridays. We also, our staff also goes to specific locations whenever they are reported by residents or by staff. So not only do we follow this schedule, but we also go out and go to reported areas as well. A lot of the illegal dumping hotspots are in high-density areas such as residential buildings, because these areas produce more bulky waste. And renters moving in or vacating tend to leave items behind. They usually leave them in alleys, in freeways, or on railroad right-of-way, because usually these locations are hidden and overlooked. So this is a typical illegal dumping hotspot in the Monita Gardens area. As you can see, there's a lot of items that are left behind by renters whenever they move out. And so it is our job as the city to make sure that this mess is cleaned up. The municipal code mentions illegal dumping and bulky items, and there's also a line in the municipal code about consequences related to illegal dumping, which include fines and misdemeanors as well. So the city offers many current services to combat illegal dumping. Our Public Works Street Division does collections five days a week. We also have a separate hotspots crew that goes around to areas that are more prone to illegal dumping and bulky items, and they go around three days a week. They cover approximately 100 locations a day and collect seven to eight bulky items. And then just some of the routes that they go around to are City Hall, the Bridge of Hope Community Housing, public parking lots, Rosecrans Avenue, Aviation Boulevard, Monita Gardens. The city also has Martinez Landscape as our general maintenance contractor that assists with this service as well. They focus on Monita Gardens, North Hawthorne, alleys, and the railroad right-of-way. They currently do three days a week and 60 locations per day. And in January 1, 2026, they're going to increase their services to five days a week and extra crew in hotspots as well. And then we have Republic Services, who is the city's exclusive franchise hauler. They do the bulky item pickup whenever that gets scheduled. Again, you can schedule in advance by calling their number, and make sure not to leave your bulky items before you call, make sure to do it after it's been scheduled, and you just need a one-day advance notice. And again, the restrictions are no oversized materials or hazardous items, and they also assist the city with enforcement as well. They usually red-tag the illegal dumping materials, and then they'll give it a green tag if any additional fines are necessary. So the city hosts multiple events to combat illegal dumping and recycling in general. We have our paper shredding and e-waste collection days. We have our household hazardous and e-waste drive-through collection events, and we also have our community cleanup days that Caltrans usually assists with that. And just to note, on November 15, Public Works and Community Services will be hosting a paper shredding and e-waste collection day at the Betty Ainsworth Sports Center from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. So recently, the city held a hazardous waste event in collaboration with LA County and multiple South Bay cities. This was hosted by Clean Harbors, this was on September 20, and it served 583 households, and 494 vehicles went to the event. Statistic-wise, they collected 3,330 pounds of trash and 60 drums of hazardous waste material, including oil and antifreeze. The city is continuing to expand its services, so future services include expanded collection frequency, as previously mentioned with Martinez Landscape, and also adding more crews to combat this issue. We're also going to be doing stronger enforcement through mobile camera trailers at hotspot locations. To do this stronger enforcement, the city has been applying for funding, so we've been pursuing grants through CalRecycle Solid Waste Cleanup Grant and also the OW14 Grant to get funding for mobile hotspot vehicles. So the goal of these future services is to monitor hotspots, strengthen enforcement, and reduce illegal dumping. The city is also initiating a community initiative called Clean Hawthorne to provide a comprehensive strategy to address illegal dumping and promote a cleaner, safer city. The goal of this community initiative is to engage residents to report illegal dumping and use proper disposal methods. To do this, we're going to do more continuation and outreach through workshops, flyers, social media, and our city newsletter. And also, we're going to be partnering with our schools and neighborhoods. And this community initiative is to increase impact and accountability for the residents through active community engagement and providing regular updates on illegal dumping results and grant funding progress. So some things you can do to keep Hawthorne clean are to properly sort and dispose waste. A lot of residents have three different bins. The black bin is for trash, the blue bin is for recycling like plastic, glass, and aluminum, and the green bin is for organic waste such as food waste and leaves. You can contact Republic Services again for bulky item pickup. Don't use any of those bins that are previously mentioned, but schedule a pickup with them instead. You can also report illegal dumping that you see in your neighborhood through the Hawthorne 311 app. You can report anonymously, you just need to provide information about the discarded items and also the location of those items. Staff tracks all reported information and responds to recurring hotspots. Do not use the 311 app to schedule bulky item pickup, it's only for reporting illegal dumping. So again, for bulky item pickup, use Republic Services. For illegal dumping, you can contact city staff. And also come to our cleanup events, so community cleanup, our paper shredding and e-waste events, and our household hazardous waste events. Additionally, besides throwing away unwanted items, we recommend donating or recycling them. These are some charities and organizations in the area that accept donations, so Habitat for Humanity, Goodwill, Salvation Army, all of those charities where you can donate instead of just dumping your items on the street. So that concludes our presentation. There's two QR codes up here on this slide. One is for the 311 app that you can download, and then the bottom one is Republic Services app. They have their own app where you can monitor your own account and report, or do your bulky item pickup that way as well. And Jose and I can take any questions you may have at this time.
To the chair.
Yes.
Thank you so much, DJ, and thank you so much, Jose. Great presentation. I like the fact that we're going to put this across the board on social media, our website, we're going to have the number available so that folks can just dial in and make sure that's the correct number, because oftentimes the number is not right. And I know in the chat box, the little chat box, you'll ask questions, and sometimes that's not right. So we just need to make sure that we're on point when it comes to information such as this, and I appreciate right now the presentation you're providing. I also want to give thanks to Vaughn in our leadership efforts, along with Public Works, to include, starting January, additional staff and equipment so that we could be able to go make more rounds in the community and be able to pick the bulky items. There is a lot of bulky items that are left, oftentimes unseen, and those are the ones that are hard to get to, because they're not reported. So to the community, if you do see something, please report it on your own, even though it might not be yours, you're contributing to the betterment of Hawthorne and keeping it beautified. So I just want to again commend everyone for helping and working towards a better Hawthorne, and more importantly, a cleaner Hawthorne. So I look forward to the upcoming events that we have, that we've been doing this for many years now when it comes to community cleanups and environmental, you know, waste pickup from your electronic goods, et cetera. But there's always those vehicles that come to our location asking if we could dispose of paint. And I know that's a challenge sometimes. They'll have buckets of paint, they'll have oil, they have this kind of stuff. So if there's those collaborated efforts that could bring in those entities to pick up those particular items, that would be ideal, because we'd be capturing that and a lot more. But again, I commend you both and appreciate your time this evening for the presentation. Thank you.
Yes.
Hello. Thank you. I want to say thank you so much for this presentation. I get a lot of calls, a lot of texts, and I see some folks in the audience that have had some challenges with the bulky pickup. And one of the questions that I wanted to ask, and I know that we talked about this a few council meetings ago, we talked about signage, putting more signage in the community about illegal dumping, and I just wanted to follow up with that to see if that was something that we did, and if not, to make sure that we follow through in putting those signs in those hotspots if they don't have them. Also, I just want to share this with the community. If you see something, please let folk know, and the information that you receive tonight, please share it with your neighbors so that we can combat this issue that we're continuing to have. And I believe that as we get closer to the Olympics and other events that are going to be coming to California, we're going to see more building, temporary building for that. So I'm so glad that we're tackling this right now before all of that major construction or temporary building, because we're right next to Inglewood, and so I would assume that we may see an increase in it, but the fact that we're deploying this type of program to make sure that we deal with it, I'm so happy. And again, if you see something, please use that 31 app and share this with your neighbors, and we're going to continue to work to make sure that we're doing what we need, what you need to make sure we're keeping the City of Hawthorne clean. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if possible, can I have DJ talk about the dumping signs that have been installed? If you can give an estimate of location, amount, and maybe show the diagram of what has been installed? Thank you.
So this is the illegal dumping, the new illegal dumping signs that have been created. Public Works has a sign-making machine, so we've developed this new sign that has both English and Spanish about the fine for illegal dumping, and they've been posted all over Hawthorne, especially the hotspot areas. And then if you notice any areas that do not currently have this sign, please let us know, and we can post it in those hotspot areas as well.
Thank you.
To the chair.
Yes.
Ditto to everything that has been said before. You guys did a great presentation, great programs. I know we have our no dumping, illegal dumping signs for $1,000 fine. What are we doing about the landlords with all the rental units, and we have to keep picking that up? Do we have anything in place where they're notified, they're fined, or something?
Councilwoman Fay Johnson, the problem has been that we have to catch them in the act. So we have to figure a way out where to be in all locations at one time. Currently working with the police department to possibly, possible to buy additional camera trailers to actually put in those hotspots. So we're looking at funding to be able to do that. But it's really difficult, because you're talking about one area of a six-square-mile city trying to find that person dumping. So what we do ask the community, as Councilwoman Manny said, if you see someone dumping, report it, possibly film it, send it to the police department, and we can conduct active investigation.
Okay, thank you.
I'd just like to add that, and I just want to throw this out there. I mean, people want to do business in our city by owning these apartment buildings. Ultimately, I personally feel that they should be responsible for buying these cameras and making, and keeping their yards clean and all the stuff that ends up on their yard. They want to do business in Hawthorne, that's what it takes. Don't go cheap on getting a property manager that's going to be, I was going to say, half doing their job, but there was something else I wanted to say, right? So I think it's incumbent on them, so I think, I know that that's the way it's been, but I'd just like to up it and hold them accountable a bit more, so I just. Maybe we haven't implemented, maybe I think if you guys would like, I think we should start looking at it differently.
Mr. City Attorney, do we have the oomph to be able to enforce it in that manner?
I think you'd have to go back to the original planning stage when a development is approved. You can put it as a condition of property that they're willing to fund cameras as part of enforcement, but that goes back a step. We could always draft an ordinance. As the city manager was indicating, it's always about the actus reus, catching someone in the act to be able to prove the elements. And there could be restitution issues, but that's what I think right now. I can do some further research on that for you if you like.
And not just the camera issue, but just the cleanliness, making sure that, just like when I say to somebody, hey, you know, you got to cut your weeds in your house, you know what I'm saying? This is your yard, you got to keep it clean.
The city also has regular nuisance issues and codes on the book, and code enforcement does a pretty good job of dealing with what we call nuisances.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
To the chair.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, DJ, thank you, Jose. This was something that in 2018, I ran for the cleanup Hawthorne, right? And we've been trying, we've been trying, and that's what the 20 bulky item a year came about, because before it was only three pickups. So I was glad to see that we've been aggressive, because I have to tell you, even yesterday, I was driving on Cordery. I saw couches, mattresses, right on the sidewalk, right, right on top of the sidewalk in front of an apartment building, but probably somebody moved out, and they didn't want to take those stuff with them. They were all on the street. So that is, for us, that's what all of us here has been asking Vaughn and the Public Works to do more, because even it's going to cost us money, because higher more crew and higher, you know, contract Martinez Landscape, it's going to, more money coming from our general fund that we have to put people on the street to clean up the mess that these people are doing. So that is where all the prevention matter that we can do, like those signs, cameras, is well taught, because we need to catch some of these predators in the act of doing that, because that's the challenge, right? Because our police is, you know, is busy doing some other safety program out there that is necessary, but to go after trash is kind of difficult. So that is where I'm glad to see that we've been proactive and make sure that we're going to clean up Hawthorne, and I'm hoping soon people will help us out, because the residents have to help us out, because it's your neighborhood, right? It's your kid going to school through those sidewalks, so we need to clean them up. So thank you for that.
Councilmember Mayor Potem Montero, I just wanted to add something, just a different perspective on that, and I understand, I respect your perspective, sir, but we got to recognize that the City of Hawthorne is about 70% renters here, and it's the biggest, you know, portion is in certain parts of our city. That's why we see the concentration of the illegal dumping, but there's a high turnover. People come, then they have to move out, and sometimes, if we didn't have such a high turnover, we wouldn't be having such a big problem. They start raising their rents, and people who've lived there for, you know, it's happened. We have so many renters that it happens more frequently than, you know, than we can bear, right? And so that's why we notice it. So I personally... So I personally would it, even though it's an infraction, it's illegal or whatever you want to call it, I personally have a sympathetic view as to the plight of a lot of these people. They don't know where to dump it, or, you know, they just got a, they got just the eviction notices and they have to leave. And so what is the first, right, DJ? I mean, you've recognized that. And it's in the high rental areas, right? It's not like down the single-family residence neighborhoods, right? So I think we just also have to be sympathetic about that, too.
I just want to clarify, it's not an infraction, it's a misdemeanor.
Ah, carajo. Ooh, so it's even worse. I was just hoping it was just an infr- okay, there you go.
Thank you.
The next presentation is going to be from Dr. Brian Markarian. Mayor Protem Montero, can you please introduce him?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like you said, you know, Dr. Brian Markarian from the Hawthorne School District Superintendent. He's been doing outstanding work for the school district. And he got the good news for us and going to be very happy to hear what he had to say. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the council, city staff, and members of the audience. As shared, my name is Brian Markarian. I'm the proud superintendent of the Hawthorne School District. And I'm just trying to get a, it looks like our presentation came through as a PDF. So I'm going to scroll through a little differently, I think, than we had planned here. Let me just double check. I got it, it won't go that way. Thank you, thank you. All right, so just to share some of the highlights of things going on across the school district, we want to celebrate some of the successes we have and also thank the city for the partnership in so many ways that we work together to support our kids and families. First of all, just want to share that we are moving in the right direction. So recently, the state of California released the student test scores from the last state assessment round. And as you can see, in California, growth was 1.77% in English Language Arts. Hawthorne School District grew 2.62%, so above the state average. In math, 1.76% growth in California. In Hawthorne, 3.75%, so more than double the growth. Science, the state grew at 2%, we grew at 3.04%. We don't have the hard numbers on these yet, but chronic absenteeism is down, attendance rates are up, suspension rates are down. So all of our markers are moving in the right direction. And that's not a surprise to us because we are a positive outlier district. So we've been recognized nationally by the Learning Policy Institute for closing achievement gaps and for the success of our students. And we're one of seven school districts in the state that was recognized with a district case study that can be found online as well. In the area of positive environments and supports for our students, we implement PBIS, which is Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports. We recently recognized all 11 HSD schools, received the Silver Implementation Award, state-level award, for implementing positive environments, having positive environments at all of our schools and classrooms for our students. We're also a capturing kids' hearts district. So we implement that framework, which is a way in which we build relationships with our students. Things as simple as greetings at the door, sharing good things that are going on, making sure that our kids know that we care about them each and every day. And also, we did have two schools over the past few years recognized by the Friendship Club. And I highlight that because that's really an example of inclusion between students with disabilities and their general education peers. So both York School and Zella Davis School were Friendship Club Schools of the Year. And last year, we celebrated the fact that we were accepted into the League of Innovative Schools. That's a national network of school districts that are doing innovative work, especially in the areas of technology and making sure that we're closing the digital divide for our students and families. Not going to play this video, but we have a short little video we prepared that's online, which recognizes our two-way bilingual immersion program at Ramona School. I will just say that we operate the longest-standing TWEB program in the South Bay in the area of celebrating over 28 years of students becoming bilingual, belligerent when they leave Ramona School. At the middle school level, all three of our middle schools, Bud Carson Middle School, Hawthorne Middle School, and Prairie Vista Middle School are state, California state schools to watch, which were up for our redesignation this year. And we know we're going to continue that designation at each school. And at the high school level, as you know, we operate Hawthorne Math and Science Academy, two-time National Blue Ribbon High School. You can see the awards and accolades that are there. You might have just read about them in the Daily Breeze. The Breeze just put out a great article about a partnership we have with Cal State Dominguez Hills. And US News and World Report, their annual rankings, you can see the rankings here, but scoring in the top 2% of high schools in the nation. And just furthering that, when we look at college access at HMSA, what we celebrated and what the Breeze celebrated was the Aviator Toro Alliance. That is a partnership we have with Cal State Dominguez Hills that guarantees that every graduate from HMSA will be not only admitted into Cal State Dominguez Hills, but into the first major of their choice, which is something that they don't have that agreement with any other school, to know that they can actually go, whether the major's impacted or not. We know our kids are going to have a seat and study whatever area of passion they have as they get into college. We also have expanded our dual enrollment with El Camino College. We're expanding that again to Cal State Dominguez Hills for dual enrollment as well. And we brought on a full-time college advisor from USC in the College Advising Corps that works full-time at HMSA, just talking about post-secondary options for students and also the funding and how to get there. A little bit about student safety, we are so appreciative of our partnership with Hawthorne Police Department. In every way that we could ask for, we're supported. We contract with the city for a school resource officer who works within our schools in the school district. And also, we split a contract for our crossing guards, which is, you know, again, our families continue to express gratitude for seeing those uniform crossing guards at the intersections around our schools. There's a picture here of the Stop the Bleed training that we engage in routinely with HPD, as well as our active shooter training. And we also have systems in place, I want to highlight in our schools, through Informacast, which allows staff on campus to signal an alert. Some of those alerts, depending on what's signaled, actually go right to HPD, which allow for access to our video feeds, maps of the campus, conference calls, and those things so that we can cut down on any time wasted if a crisis were to recur. We utilize Raptor, which is also a screening system for anyone coming on campus, checks against the database, make sure our schools are safe with visitors. And then also, it's just an example of digital safety, because we know that's more and more of a concern for our families. Sometimes, you know, a student might be safer wandering around outside somewhere than they might be right next to you as they're on their phone and you don't know exactly what they're getting into, what they're looking at. So we're really emphasizing that with our students and our families to make sure we know where our students are when they're online as well. And we are a community schools district. We're so proud to say that. What that means is we're not just situated within the community, it means we serve the community. We're hand-in-hand with our families to support our kids. Each one of our schools has a community schools advisory council. And they decide kind of the unique focus, whether it's, you know, career support for families, health supports for students and families, arts integration, whatever that looks like, that's brought to life at the school. I want to highlight that our city clerk also sits on one of those advisory councils and donates time at one of our schools as well. But it's just, it's really been a transformational introduction to our district to say, this is not only, again, something that we do as we support our kids, but something we do hand-in-hand with our families. And our focus on health and wellness, so every one of our schools has a school counselor, we have school psychologists, we have school social workers, we have board-certified behavior analysts, we have registered behavior technicians, we have therapists, multiple layers of support to make sure that our students, in any area of need, that we have something to support them. And then also, we have at York School, we operate an actual health clinic in partnership with Venice Family Clinic. We have full health services accessible to all students. And everyone in the household of a student can go to York School and receive that care. That will soon be expanded community-wide as well. And we are in the works now to open a second health clinic, hopefully before the end of this current school year. Our students stay active and engaged. I think these pictures speak volumes more than I can about the physical activity and the way in which we keep them active. I want to also recognize Chevron and LAFC, they put in the third. They've now put in three footsall courts at our middle schools, which is going to allow us to have a footsall league across the district, which we can't wait for that to begin. The pictures of the bikes, you can see innovative ways in which we're engaging kids in fitness, where, you know, they'll have those bikes and interactive screens where it looks like they're biking through the Swiss Alps or wherever they want to go, in different ways in which you can keep them active and engaged and healthy. And that ties into our expanded learning. So we operate an expanded learning program, which means we offer a nine-hour school day plus 30 additional days per year to any student who wants to participate, and a range of activities. We know that we can't run math and language arts all the way until 6:00 every night. We wouldn't have many students staying in the program. So we have some of that academic support mixed in with other things like culinary arts, dance, theater, sports, and all different types of cultural performances to make sure that our students have a well-rounded, holistic education. Those two pictures in the middle, that's actually our Cinemagic project. I want to highlight that Prairie Vista Middle School, they partner with Cinemagic each year. And last year, won a prize for most inspirational film in the LA Film Festival. And we're so proud of our top-notch facilities that we maintain for our students and for our families. I think, again, the pictures speak volumes. When they come to our schools, they're clean, they're safe, secure campuses. Our custodial staff works so hard to make that happen. And then finally, transportation. This is a new area for us. We have, on Friday, we will technically have a fleet because our second HSD school bus will roll into the district. And we also have a number of vans that we've purchased for our middle schools and for HMSA to make sure that our students can access all those off-campus opportunities. We got tired of students coming with their lunches and having to go back to the classroom because the bus company couldn't send a bus or find a driver. So we said, we're going to work around that and actually develop our own fleet to get our kids where they need to go. And then just to wrap up, just a thank you on behalf of our HSD Board of Trustees. And really appreciate, again, the partnership, not only for our programs, what we do in the district, but I've said, you know, three-plus years ago when I was at this podium, when I transitioned to the position, I said I feel strongly that the future of the city and the future of the school district are intertwined. I feel that way today even more, knowing that our success is your success and vice versa. And it means so much that we work well together in support of our kids and our community. And our motto is the Hawthorne Way, every student, every day, making sure that our kids can achieve their dreams and what they want to do and that we give them the tools, the knowledge, and the resources to get there. That is the end of the presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Markarian, for coming in tonight and to show us all the good stuff that's happening at the Hawthorne School District. And congratulations on all those schools, because we know it's not easy to get all those acclamation from the state and to be nationally recognized, especially the Hawthorne Math and Science Academy. And again, congratulations for the Toro, you know, the Cal State Dominguez Hills partnership. Because imagine that you guys graduate, almost 400 kids, to go straight to the college, university, and that is a tremendous achievement. So because especially nowadays, college is expensive. So that is a tremendous achievement for our community, because those kids come from our community in Hawthorne and surrounding areas. So thank you for everything you do. And I know you for a long time. You were principal, and then to go to the district office and then become superintendent. So you have achieved a tremendous, per se, yourself. So congratulations and continue to do this good work. Because like I said, the children's our future. They're going to take care of us when we get old. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I appreciate that. I'm celebrating 25 years in the school district this year. So it's an honor each and every day to work in our community, our schools. Thank you.
To the chair.
Go ahead.
Dr. Markarian, thank you so much for the presentation. It's good to see that our students are excelling. And I can't say enough, just all the statistics, the numbers that you brought to us. It looks like Hawthorne is thriving. And kudos to your teachers, your aides, and all your assistants, and your tutors. I mean, it's because of the great staff that you have, the great team that you have, that we see numbers rise as they do. And also with your leadership. So thank you so much to you and your team. Congratulations.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
To the chair.
Yes.
Thank you so much. And I have to highlight the dual enrollment. That is so important. My daughter just graduated high school and went off to college. And I know when I, I'm not going to date myself, but I know when I was going through school, there was no such thing. And so you started from ground zero going into college, where literally you could walk out of high school with an associate degree now if you know what's going on. And I've seen some people actually leave with a bachelor's degree, but that's a lot of work. But it helped my daughter a lot going into college where she could literally graduate in her junior year. That's a lot of money saved. So thank you for doing that for our students here in Hawthorne. And I do have one question. I know that the governor signed into law the SB 640 this month. And it's the direct access to admissions program to our Cal States. How, I know it's brand new, but just curious, how do you see that integrating into your current programs?
Yes, I mean, it's, anything that guarantees admission to students in college just takes off a layer of anxiety and stress at a time when, you know, they're not exactly sure what the future holds. So we're really excited to know that that's going to exist. The kind of difference and nuance with our partnership is the first major of their choice. So you can be guaranteed admission, but it might not be into the major or area that you want to pursue as a passion. But I think it's a fantastic opportunity for our kids to know that that is a pathway that's there for them for college and to know that anyone who's eligible can walk that path is wonderful.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah, go ahead.
Where are you going to go?
No, go ahead, go ahead.
I too echo what everybody else has said up here. But I will tell you that the Ramona Emergence Program is really successful. I've had an opportunity to go over there a few times and read to the kids, but also volunteer. And when I tell you how involved the parents are, I swear, it must have been 4,000 people that showed up to any of the events that you guys have. And so I also want to give kudos to the parents out there that support their kids because the engagement that you guys have at that school is really, truly amazing. And the program itself is an amazing program. And as I understand, it's one of the best pro-emergent programs in the country. So thank you so much for your leadership in that. And I love the idea of the new transportation fleet, because I have to say, thank you. We did a tour with the seniors. We all went to, I'm sorry, I hosted 40 of the seniors and we went to Verizon to do a tour. And we couldn't have done that without the bus to take us there. So I appreciate that because I have tons more trips that we need to go on. So it's good to know that we got a bus to take us there. Thank you.
Appreciate it. And I remember seeing you at back-to-school night, and that was a pleasure to see you there. Appreciate it at Ramona School as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Markarian, thank you so much for what you do for the school district, for Hawthorne's students. And when I say Hawthorne students, the success of your school is due to the great quality of parents that we have, the great quality of the teachers, and, you know, just that energy that our Hawthorne students have. You don't depend, your high school doesn't depend on permits, you know, as much as other school districts do. And I say that for a reason, because we have some of our other school districts here in Hawthorne that it's like 80% permits and 20%, why have a high school if it's not going to service your own kids, your own district? So I just kind of find that kind of weird. But I don't think you've mentioned this enough, but nationally, Hawthorne Math and Science is ranked 331st place. And I'll say it, compared to DaVinci, which is in 4,934th place. I mean, come on, guys. I mean, that's something to celebrate, right? Let's give them a round of applause.
That credit goes to our HMSA aviators. We have 331 out of over 17,000 high schools.
17,000. And in California, I think it's either eight or 40. Which one is it? Eight or 40 in California? Fortieth place? Let's be safe, conservative, right? I think it's eight, but 40th place compared to the DaVinci schools at 631. So, I mean, you know what? I think that's something to say about Hawthorne students, the teachers, and the families. So I think you should highlight that even more. You should even highlight that even more. I say, that's a selling point for our schools and, you know, the emergent program you were talking. I think, do you still have the bilingual program at Ramona?
At Ramona, yes.
Oh.
Yeah, and that feeds into the program at Hawthorne Middle School as well.
That one, people are trying to get their kids in with permits, but you know.
It's a growing program, continues to grow.
But you serve Hawthorne students first, so that's what I like about it, so.
Mayor, can I just make mention real quick, since we're on TV and I want to make sure you get the credit? It's 331 in national rankings, 40 in California high schools, 14 in Los Angeles County metro area high schools, and 71 in charter high schools, with a top 2% of high schools in the nation. To be commended. Congratulations. And again, the credit goes to our students and staff and families. We've got to give it up to our parents, because, you know, it's up to our parents to get our students to school each and every day. And so we thank you and applaud you, the parents. students to school each and every day. And so we thank you and applaud you, the parents. So thank you to all the moms and dads, all the PTAs, all the parent groups. Thank you.
And I'll add to it, your focus is on, I teach, right? I teach high school and I teach El Camino. And so I'm into all this stuff. And I, I'm really excited on the focus on academics. Forget all the extracurricular stuff. You know, it's very important, but your main focus is academics where it should be. Okay, so thank you.
And Dr. Markarian, let me tell you, last Friday, we had the Hispanic Heritage Month over here, and those kids from Ramona, oh my God. And that kid singing, you know, the mariachi, it was a tremendous voice. I couldn't believe he sat at Ramona, you know, elementary school. So, and then all the artwork that they send us to display. So thank you for all of that. Like I said, you know, I'm, I've been proud of Hawthorne School District since, you know, 90s and until now, we have achieved tremendous stuff right there. So thank you. Continue to do that. So you know I love you anyway. So thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Item four, supplemental law enforcement services.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, city staff, community members. Thank you for allowing me to do this presentation today on our medical service program at the Hawthorne Police Department. So our medical service program is ran by Police Officer Dr. Joe Nakagawa. He's a board-certified emergency medicine doctor and an emergency medical services doctor. He's got dual certification, and he's been in this role with the EMS system for 21 years. He's a graduate of UCLA Medical School, and he has worked for the Hawthorne Police Department through volunteer hours, reserve hours, and now as a full-time police officer for the last 20 years. As our program has grown throughout our police department, every one of our police officers is certified in CPR, AED, basic first aid, stop the bleed classes, as well as we've additionally trained 16 of our police officers to be EMTs, and three of those to be paramedics. There's an immense amount of training that Dr. Nakagawa oversees in order for our officers to be able to provide the service, and in order for us to be able to implement the AEDs, the medical devices, the medical bags in our police cars, as well as throughout city buildings. Currently, we run AED, Narcan, and Stop the Bleed stations in every city building here that is owned by the City of Hawthorne. So the parks here at City Hall, the Police Department, all have bags, medical bags, as well as the employees here, we've also trained to provide first aid, AED, Narcan, as well as Stop the Bleed classes in the event of an emergency. Currently, Dr. Nakagawa oversees the Hawthorne Police Department medical program, as well as four contract cities. So the City of Gardena Police Department, the El Segundo Police Department, the Inglewood Police Department, and the Manhattan Beach Police Department, all have contracts with the city, with the Police Department, that Dr. Nakagawa oversees and provides training and oversight, as well as policy and procedures for those cities. He also aids our officers and our employees throughout the injury process in the event of an injury, and he communicates with our city insurer. He oversees our employee wellness program, sharp performance, as well as our yearly health exams. He teaches community Stop the Bleed classes, CPR classes. He also has been able to get us a lot of funding through Measure B, which is through the EMS agency, which allows us to bring in Stop the Bleed bags, as well as Narcan for free, for our community and for our officers, and for officers that are part of this program. Just to give a little oversight of what he's been able to accomplish here in the last 20 years in the City of Hawthorne, he's trained over 1,000 officers throughout the state, as well as 530-plus community members during community classes, 31 classes, including Stop the, I'm sorry, Ride to Live classes that are hosted through OTS grants for motorcycle safety. He's also aided in the training that has led to 167 lives saved by our officers throughout the last 20 years in the City of Hawthorne. As for overseeing Gardena, which he's been doing for roughly four years, if you look at the bottom here, you could see that he's aided in training those officers to save 78 lives. A lot of those are through Narcan and tourniquet use. Narcan is a reversal agent for those people that are overdosing on opioids. So a large amount of saves that our officers and neighboring agencies provide is Narcan, which is free through the Measure B funding, as well as the training which he provides. El Segundo Police Department, you can see here at the bottom, 44 lives saved in the last three years of his overseeing of their department. City of Manhattan Beach, nine lives saved. And the City of Inglewood, 66 lives saved. All three of these agents, the last three of these agencies have been part of this program for the last three years. And the amount of confidence that these officers have, and the training that they have, is a, a large part due to Dr. Nakagawa and the resources that he's able to bring in, to provide to our officers, to have the confidence to provide these skills to the community. With that said, I would like to take any questions that anyone might have.
Do you have a question? Okay, what's the cost of the Narcan?
Narcan's free.
The Narcan is free for members of the program, the police agencies that are participating in the program?
Absolutely. So the way that it works is Dr. Nakagawa is able to get federal Narcan through federal agencies, which then is at no cost to our department and the other departments, which then we can carry and provide to, during calls. We also provided it during the COVID crisis that occurred. We were going out to homeless encampments, as well as out into the community to provide it, prior to the community be able to get it now through CVS for free as well, and other pharmacies.
Can you please highlight the dangers of, we're talking fentanyl being the bane of the, the drug that's the most dangerous out there. Can you talk about how dangerous they are? It, it is, you know, it's based on just absorption. You touch something, can you just kind of?
Absolutely.
What's, what, what's the smallest dose that could cause death? Go ahead.
So most of the time what you see is, is some type of pill form. It depends on the concentration of the pill, the type of opioid that it is. But one pill could kill. That's a lot of the things you see on TV, a lot of the ads you see, could be laced into other drugs, marijuana, other recreational drug use. But the problem with opioids is that it enables, or enables you from being able to breathe. So it's a, it's a respiratory depressant. And so when somebody overdoses on opioids, it's because they no longer breathe. They're no longer able to, to do that. They pass out, and then they basically suffocate. Narcan is an immediate reversal upon implementation through usually a nasal passage. And as soon as you start deploying that and breathing for them, it reverses it very quickly.
I just want to make sure that people out there know that, make sure you wash your hands when, after you touch doorknobs and all this other stuff, not to be paranoid or something, because it's real small, like granules worth of, of this stuff that could come into your body and your bloodstream and just knock you out and just take you out. So, and that's why Narcan's even important in some of the areas that we would least expect it, correct?
Yes, sir. So most places have it now, wherever an AED is located in a public building. So that way, you know, you can deploy that if you suspect some type of overdose.
To the chair. So I was reading where it says that it's 25,000 to each police department. Is this the amount that we're, you're asking to keep his services here, that the City of Hawthorne would pay 25,000, and they would pay 25,000? Can you please explain to me?
Yes, ma'am. So these, these cities are paying the City of Hawthorne. So today, Gardena is requesting his services. So it's 25,000 that they'll be paying the City of Hawthorne to offset these services. Each city that we have a contract with pays the City of Hawthorne. So Inglewood pays the City of Hawthorne, Gardena pays the City of Hawthorne, El Segundo pays the City of Hawthorne. And all of these offset the costs for employee benefits, employee costs.
So are you asking us to renew his contract, or are you asking us to agree for him to be able to do services for Gardena?
Yes, the second one. So today is a proposal and agenda item for Dr. Nakagawa, the Police Department, to provide medical service oversight to the city, the Police Department of Gardena. And then they will pay the City of Hawthorne for that.
Okay. So if he's providing all of these folks services, do we have time?
I was just going to say, Councilmember, I think that's on the agenda. We can ask those questions at that time. It might be the best time to do it.
Okay.
Thank you, Captain Lane, for the presentation. This is, is a fantastic that we, we, I think we wanted the Police Department to have the first doctor, MD, in our staff, and have trained so many other officers to save lives. Because when we go to those Medal of Valor ceremony awards, Hawthorne is always highlighted, so many lives they have saved, you know, from, from a child being drowned in the pool, to the narcotics, some people on the streets for stopping bleeding. So to me, you know, Dr. Nakagawa has been like an angel to us, to us, to our department, because if you put all the numbers to head, he has saved 274 lives in this different community together. So, so it's a tremendous service that he provides. And for us, we have him, and that's what, when we go to meetings to other cities, to other, and they always say, you know, Hawthorne is on the forefront of innovation and technology and medical, all this stuff, because we are first. And we, that is the way that Hawthorne always be. A seat of good neighbor, that we're going to save life. We do not take lives. We save lives.
Thank you, sir. Yes. He's the only full-time medical police officer in the state of California.
To the chair.
Yes.
Thank you, Captain Lane, for the presentation. And Captain Port and Chief, appreciate it. We've been doing this for many years. I remember way back in 2018, but I was one that also participated in the CPR training course. I think it was an eight-hour course that took place at the police station with other community members. And we also had an opportunity to view some video of an actual CPR that was administered to a young baby. I say young child, maybe five, maybe seven, right across the street at the Marriott Hotel, who just about drowned. And because of the training that the physician provided to the police officers here in Hawthorne, they were able to perform CPR, and she came to full, you know, relief and, and back to normal. So I, I have to commend the doctor for that, for his efforts to train across the board. But more importantly, for the mutual aid that we provide to all of our partners in the community, from Inglewood to Lawndale to, I know Lawndale's sheriffs, but we have great participation all around here in the South Bay with police officer to police officer. So thank you for the presentation. I think the presentation is important so that it could be very transparent in, in viewing the numbers. It's capturing by the assistance he's provided in the years that he's been doing this. So again, congratulations on the presentation. I'd like to see in the next fiscal year coming up, along with the cert that we have an upcoming January meet and greet, another CPR training offered to our community so that we could do a new 2026 CPR course. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
To the chair. Thank you very much for the presentation. I had an opportunity to sit down and talk with you earlier in the week and, or last week. And to hear about the program really just made me so proud. I mean, I didn't even know it existed. And to hear what we as Hawthorne, our Hawthorne Police, have been able to bring, not only to us, but to all of California. Everybody's copying what we're doing. And really to have the police being seen as they're here to save my life, not take my life. We're changing, you know, like you were saying, when, when the ideas were first brought up and, and they were saying, well, police don't do that. And it's like, well, why not? We're on the scene first. Why can't we be trained to, to care for the person rather than standing around watching them bleed out, because we don't know what to do? So hats off to, to you guys. And this is an outstanding thing that we can say for Hawthorne. Also, do you mind if I do a shout-out for your Hawthorne Police TacMed Instagram?
By all means.
They, they are on Instagram. If you want to see some of the things that they do, the doctor, not only does he do all this, all up and down California, but he also has time to sit down with Eric and create social media posts for Instagram. So you can see what they're doing. And some of it is actual live footage from body cams on, on lives that are saved. So it's HawthornePolice_tacmed. That's T as in Tom, A C M as in Michael, E D as in Delta. And it's on Instagram. So watch us there. I think it's great that we're getting this out. And when I was talking to your one police officer, Jack, he was telling me how the, the cops actually race to the scene now because they feel confident. And whoever gets there first gets to take care of the patient, because typically you guys get there before the police. And he actually had one instance where the, the individual who was the criminal, who was injured, didn't want the, the fire department to help him. He wanted the police officer that was there helping to continue to help him. He's like, no, no, he's got it, he's got it. And it's like, when do you ever see that, where the criminal is saying, oh, no, I want the cop over here with me, taking care of me? So it's changing the whole perception of what policing is all about. So thank you very much, and thanks for spending time with me.
You're welcome. Thank you. One last thing, I just wanted to say thank you to Hawthorne Cable, because Dr. Nakagawa works with Hawthorne Cable to create those videos. And they spend a lot of time, and they look very professional, so.
I'm very much interested in, I know that we have an item to vote on. It would have been best if this presentation would have immediately preceded the item. But you had a question that I'm interested in, Councilwoman Manning.
Oh, I was just, my question was, how does our medical director have the time to work full-time with the city and then work for all of these other cities?
Yeah, so it's mostly policy and procedure oversight. He works in our Police Department. He's there Monday through Thursday, like with the rest of us. And the training that's provided is every two years is, the training is provided. And he oversees the information that's provided. Our officers, our other officers, our EMTs, our paramedics provide the training. And so he's not necessarily the hands-on trainer for every single class. But when we do a community class, we put him out in front with the community, so that way they get to see the doctor and understand where the program comes from. But it's mostly policy procedure oversight, more of as administrator.
Thank you.
Wouldn't, wouldn't it be most appropriate for these, well, how many cities does he render services to?
He contracts services for four other cities, yes.
Wouldn't it make sense for these people to hire their own medical director?
Well.
And you know, why are we lending out ours? If we, we need his full-time attention for our community and to be on call for when, whenever we have emergencies, to actually go out there and do that, as opposed to maybe spending 20%, 30%, 40% of the time here?
Yes, sir. I understand.
Mr. Mayor, if I can jump in there?
Yeah, I mean, please clarify.
The one thing for the officer, he's one of a kind. He's actually a sworn police officer, acting or not acting, actually participating as a full medical doctor. Not every police department can go get one of those. And for a city to go get a metal, medical director, you're looking at probably $300,000 to $400,000. So I think, you know, with Captain Lane speaking about this, it puts us in a great situation to be able to be the leader in the South Bay, but also lend our, our knowledge to other cities to be the pioneers in the South Bay.
I'm just coming, coming at it from a Hawthorne-first type of approach.
And I think when this program was first established, it was meant to be cost recovery. And I think Captain Lane and Captain Port and Chief Tomatoni, he's doing a great job recovering the fees for his salary.
Yeah. I mean, I know we're like pioneers in a lot of stuff, especially in this. I mean, I know we're like pioneers in a lot of stuff, especially in this, and then also in the coffee with the cop, you know, the drone, you know, policing that we have, and so many other things, right? So, yeah, that's all I'm saying.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want, no, I just want to make sure we're going through a presentation, and if you want to pull this item, it's item number 21, you can ask specific questions. Just want to comply with the Brown Act, sorry.
Okay.
Yay, David.
Sorry.
Wow, I didn't expect that, but okay. Oh, that's fair, that's fair, of course, yeah. But it's just, I just had, we, okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we love to spread the word.
Thank you.
I'm all red over here. The Good Neighbor Award, Human Resources, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and remaining council members. Tonight, I'm going to present to you the nominees for the September 2025 Good Neighbor Award. When I call your name, please stand. Brandon goes above and beyond every single day. Every day, he's here with a smile and a positive attitude, no matter what he faces. And no matter what his workload is, he continues to be a positive vibe, which lightens the load for the people in his division. He's always spreading the positive vibes to the rest of the department and to those in City Hall. Brandon's accountability for the videos he edited was a big part of the state of the city, state of the city's success. He was very efficient with managing his time for that project while still maintaining his regular workload on a day-to-day. Brandon is a huge piece for our media department. He is our master editor that commits to working, or excuse me, making sure all media that comes out is as perfect as it can be. Without Brandon, we wouldn't have things such as our City View newsletter that he created from scratch. Brandon's hands are on every media content that comes out for the media department. Brandon has worked on two State of the City video presentations, and it was his creativity that was on display at the mayor's event. He even went out and purchased his own drone to make sure that he met his own expectations and his vision in making our city projects look as good as they did. This alongside with his super-positive energy every single day is what set Brandon apart.
Excellent. Thank you.
Brandon, is it true that your mother's here?
Oh, yeah.
Mom, you should be proud. Next, we have Catherine Alcantara. Catherine is a part of our Administrative Services Division or Department. Catherine consistently demonstrates professionalism, dedication, and a positive attitude every day. She is timely in completing reports, reliable in meeting deadlines, and always willing to support her colleagues across all areas of the city. Her efficiency and attention to detail ensure that projects run smoothly and effectively. During this nomination period, Catherine exemplified accountability and integrity by ensuring all reports were submitted ahead of schedule and cross-checking information for accuracy. She also showed respect and professionalism by assisting team members and all elected officials with complex tasks and stepping in wherever needed without hesitation. Catherine's timeliness and reliability directly improved departmental productivity and efficiency. By providing consistent support, she reduces delays, ensures compliance, and strengthens collaboration across the office. Her contributions positively impact the city by helping maintain high standards of service to the community. What sets Catherine apart is her proactive approach and willingness to go beyond her assigned duties to support the entire team. She consistently anticipates needs, provides solutions for the office, and maintains a positive and helpful demeanor, making her a key asset to the city as a whole. Our next nominee, Angela Lee of the Department of Public Works. Angela Lee has consistently gone above and beyond in her job duties, bringing positive energy and dedication to every task she undertakes. She has played a key role in supporting department operations, taking on responsibilities outside her normal scope, such as recording minute, meeting minutes, and helping coordinate city events. Her proactive approach and willingness to assist wherever needed demonstrate her strong commitment to the success of our team and the city of Hawthorne. During department meetings, Angela volunteered to take minutes to ensure important details were captured accurately. She followed up with the team afterward to confirm that everything is covered and that all action items were clear. She also stepped up to help coordinate logistics for any city event that she assists in, handling vendor communication and staff coordination with professionalism and integrity. These efforts show her accountability, teamwork, and respect for both her colleagues and the community. Angela's contributions have strengthened communication within our department and improved efficiency during events and meetings. By taking initiative, she has helped lighten the workload for others, ensuring smooth operations and fostering a stronger team culture. Her follow-up after meetings has improved accountability, ensuring that tasks are completed and nothing falls through the cracks. Her energy and reliability does not go unnoticed. Angela stands out for her willingness to step in wherever help is needed, regardless of whether it falls under the, under her formal responsibilities. Her positive attitude, boundless energy, and eagerness to learn make her a valuable role within the Public Works Department. Our final nominee is Officer Santos Jimenez. Officer Santos Jimenez is nominated for the Good Neighbor Award in recognition of his outstanding service and dedication to the Hawthorne Police Department and the community. With over 25 years of service, Officer Jimenez has been a cornerstone of our department since 1999, initially starting as a parking enforcement officer and later transitioning to a full-time police officer in November 2001. Throughout his career, Officer Jimenez has demonstrated unwavering commitment and professionalism, taking on numerous assignments with dedication and excellence. His passion for the Traffic Bureau is evident, where he has spent the majority of his career. And let us not forget his role in maintaining order and peace at the city council meeting every other Tuesday night. It does not go unnoticed. What sets Officer Jimenez apart is his embodiment of the values and the culture of the Hawthorne Police Department. He is deeply respected by his peers and supervisor, not only for his skills as a police officer, but also for his character and commitment to the community. His service exemplifies the best of what it means to be a Hawthorne police officer. After all that I've presented to you, clearly the committee cannot decide who is the winner, so they are all winners tonight. Nominees, please come to the front so you can take a picture with the council members, please. And city manager.
Congratulations, everyone. Thank you so much for your service to the city.
Thank you.
Oral communications, please.
Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, all remarks should be addressed to the city council as a body and not to any individual council member. During oral communications, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the city council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer any remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation.
Thank you, ma'am. Pat Donaldson, if we could close the back door, please. Pat Donaldson.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council, everyone here. Patricia Donaldson, President/CEO of the Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce. I have three announcements. One is October 22nd, from 3:30 to 6:00 p.m., we're gonna have our mixer at Tapville, which is Catty Corner across from SpaceX. And that's gonna be on October 22nd. I hope you can all make it. And then November 25th, at 1:00 p.m., we're gonna have our Thanksgiving gobble and giveaway with food and turkeys with Angie and myself with the city and the chamber. So if anyone wants to donate turkeys or canned goods, you can get ahold of either one of us. That's, okay, me.
Yes.
I think all of you have my cell number. And then Christmas is December 22nd, 1:00 p.m. It's all at the Memorial Center. I'm sorry? Betty Jamesworth, yes, in the parking lot there. Okay, so now we have a new, we have several new members of the chamber that just all can't be here one time. So I'd like to have, come on up, Lorena, come up. And she's gonna tell you her name and about her business, a wonderful Mexican restaurant in Hawthorne. Here you go.
Thank you. You're too kind.
No, go ahead.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. We are very, very honored, very happy to be here. We did not expect this great welcome and introductions. So we're, sorry, so I'm, my name is Lorena Huerta, and I am co-owner of Katrina Mexican Spot, that is the name of our business. Behind me here is Zeliana Paniagua, she's owner, and William Mayorga, he's also one of the owners. What do we serve? Well, we are located at 14225 South Hawthorne Avenue. Obviously, here in the city of Hawthorne. I'm sorry? Oh, Inglewood Avenue, sorry. Yeah, I should've learned that right. 14225.
I would've been looking for you somewhere else.
I was gonna Google.
Is that a competitor's address or what?
I know, right? And I'm gonna change the name of the street to Hawthorne. It's 14225 South Inglewood Boulevard in Hawthorne, California, 90250. Yes, we are inside the Ingle, Ingle Rose Center Plaza. Yes, yes, Rosecrans and Inglewood Boulevard. It used to be Bat Ombre, and we opened our doors on May this year, 2025, and we changed it to Katrina Mexican Spot in June.
What?
So Katrina, yeah, with a C. We'll change it now for a K. We like to.
Don't get started.
We like to call ourselves the Masters of Mole and Barbacoa de Borrego.
Okay.
So all of our menu, we believe it tells a story, a story, a nostalgic story, where you are with your family, having breakfast, having a nice dinner with mom, with dad, with the kids. So this is what we represent, the nostalgic, the Mexican culture. We have a fusion here from Guatemala and Mexico, which is what our menu represents and what we have. We serve breakfast all day. We also have enchiladas, cebiches, birria, carnitas, and very nice presentations. Or in tacos, or in enchiladas. And we're also very proud to say we have a very strong catering department. We've been doing from 40 to 50 to 70 burritos, tacos, salads, churros. So we have it all, and the reason why we're here is we definitely want to invite you to give us a try. We are a small business, but we really care about the community, and we would love to have you over. We're open from Wednesday to Monday. Currently, we are closing Tuesdays, but we're gonna open Tuesdays very soon. So thank you so much for having us here, and please give us a try and file a love.
What's your hours? What's your hours?
We open from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., but Sundays, we close at 8:00 p.m. So we're opening at 9:00 a.m. daily.
The reason I ask is because oftentimes, we have city council meetings on Tuesday night, and we get out late, sometimes, you know, beyond 9:00, 10:00 o'clock. And where do we go for dinner, right?
Yes.
I don't like going to Taco Bell, I don't like the fast food places, but really looking for a restaurant with, you know, hours that maybe could accommodate, you know, those that want to eat dinner late, you know? But thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you so much, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Our closed session, we can eat that.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
Awesome. We're good? That's good? Okay, thank you so much. Awesome. We have two, I have two cards for the same organization, but I'll call Elena Maloney, please, first.
Good evening, Mayor Vargas, city council staff, and all the wonderful people here tonight. My name is Elena Maloney, and I serve as the Executive Director of the New Star Family Justice Center. The Family Justice Center is a domestic violence agency. Hawthorne has been our only home for the last 18 years. So domestic violence is a serious public health issue. Just a couple of examples are that one in three women will experience domestic violence at some point in her lifetime. Also, children exposed to domestic violence risk becoming victims themselves or perpetrators. So what our agency does is we offer programs and services that address the trauma that families experience domestic violence encounter, and we help them rebuild their lives. So I'm here because October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and each year, we do a major campaign. The theme of our campaign this year is Hope Lives Here. And it's taking place at the Hawthorne Memorial Center next week, the 23rd. One of the highlights of our campaign each year is that we recognize the winners of the anti-bullying art contest that we do with the Hawthorne School students of the middle schools of the Hawthorne School District. And so last year, council member Rais English graciously hosted these students right here in these chambers, and you saw firsthand the amazing artwork and how well they expressed what they learned about bullying and the importance of healthy relationships. Part of our program is prevention. Four of our staff go to the school, to the middle schools every single day, and they deliver, they deliver prevention services, which include teaching healthy relationships. So I would like to ask if it's possible to get a proclamation for domestic violence? The city, I know you, you know, you care about this and the residents here of Hawthorne who, to get the services. I would like to invite everybody here at our event. It's free, it's amazing. We have a lot of agencies that include service, that include Hawthorne Police Department, we're having. We're having the district attorney also having a table. So it will be great. And then we can recognize the students. So is this my three minutes up?
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Sorry, thank you very much. And the other person, my staff member, had to rush home, so she will not be here to present.
That was Achini Rasapaska?
Yes.
Rasapaxa.
Rajapaxa.
Oh, that's a J, okay.
It's from 2:00 to 5:30, so like 2:30 to 5:30. It would be amazing to see some council member come by. The kids really, you know, would love to experience also a little bit of civic engagements. That would be great for them.
Thank you. I'm sure Vaughn has got that written down. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
The Hawthorne Longdale Ministerial Association announcing their breakfast, I think.
Hello, everybody, how are you?
It says breakfast.
My name is Greg. I'm a local pastor in the area, and every month or so, we have a breakfast. It's open to the community, it's open to the council, and we get together about 7:00 in the morning for all those of you who might want to pray, either for yourselves or for the city, for your family, for the nation, we get together. And in the afternoon, it's a wider community event. So if you would like to come in and hang out with some members of the faith community, we'd love to have you. I have some flyers for that. So if you're interested, I'm going to leave them here. The food's pretty good. It's going to be this Thursday. I'm not making it, but it's still pretty good. And if you're interested, if that's something that you may want to do in the back of your mind, you thought about maybe getting a little more involved somehow without, you know, showing up on a Sunday morning, I'm going to leave a note or a list here. If you want to put your name down and your email address or text, we'd love to have you come out and, you know, be a part of what we do. So that's it. Thank you, guys, very much. God bless you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gordon Michael Migo.
You have three minutes, sir.
I don't have all night? Pardon me, sorry. Okay. Yeah, name Gordon Michael Migo, native resident of Hawthorne since October 8th, 1952. Proposition 50 on the November 4th election ballot. The Independent Citizens Commission for Determining District Boundaries, which was Proposition 11 some years ago that the voters enacted throughout the state, would be replaced by maps that are drawn by politicians if Proposition 50 were to be enacted. When the governor and other individuals claimed that it would protect democracy, they were employing 1984 Orwellian double speak that conceals an effort that really essentially destroys democracy. As an independent, middle-of-the-road voter, I base my decisions on candidates who represent the best interests of we, the people, regardless of political party. In that same vein, the boundaries of the districts in the state of California must be drawn in a proportional manner that reflects the voting patterns in our elections at the local, county, state, and federal levels. Proposition 50 does just the opposite by denying proper representation in the state legislature and US Congress, which affects the quality of life for the people. Therefore, I urge the citizens to reject this blatantly unfair proposal by voting no on Proposition 50 on the election day or when you vote early. Secondly, RE, the SB 79, which finally the governor got around deciding to approve or reject, well, he signed it. Once again, he shows contempt for we, the people, and local governments by signing it, which prevents opposition to high-density housing complexes in cities near transit corridors. Government officials on local, county level must stop this power grab of the state by filing lawsuits against SB 9 also and SB 10 in addition to SB 79 that will ruin the quality of life in our cities. Our infrastructure cannot handle all this stuff. I don't want to live in downtown New York, downtown Chicago, downtown LA. We want the suburbs to be suburbs. That's why people move here and live here. So we need to think long and hard on a lot of stuff that is coming up for decision-making at the voting booth or otherwise. Thank you.
Sir, next.
Hello, Mayor, Mayor Proterm, City Councilmember and staff. My name is Richard Harrison. First of all, I want to thank you guys for the efforts on dumping. You know I've been coming, right? You know where you can't park, but you don't know, you know, you know where you can't park, but you know where you can't dump. So I'm glad we're doing that. I'm really passionate about cleanup that side of Hawthorne. I've actually been going and knocking on doors because you guys can do your part, but we have to do ours, right? The constituents have to have a neighborhood watch. So I've been knocking on doors, asking people, hey, if you see something, say something. I've been blowing that 311 app up, right? And you guys know that, right? So thank you for effort, and we're going to have your back on that. Also, too, as I want to say about the big turd across the street, you guys know my complaints about that. 26 years that thing's sitting there. I'm so glad you guys have finally gotten a ruling on that. I have somebody who knows the owners, who's actually negotiated on buying it. So here's the thing. Where that goes, where Hawthorne goes, right? That right there, that's going to be transformational. You can imagine you guys at the ribbon cutting, that thing being changed, and I'll be next door at the bank. I just want to let y'all know that. But hey, this is, look, I'm just, hey, look, don't make dollars that don't make sense. But that's going to be transformational for this city. So I'm really excited about where Hawthorne is going to go. I want to say I appreciate you guys' work, and you guys keep doing what you're doing. One last thing. I've been talking about the circle jerks. So I want a circle jerk moratorium. We don't want no more of those things here. Look, I understand that the handjob business is not illegal, but the, whatever they do in those places, with those sex trafficking, that is. And if we have, we have seven of those in a two-mile radius, and they keep coming, you know they're saying, hey, Hawthorne is the place to come. So we have to stop that. Now, I've come here many a times, and I just want to make sure we don't keep getting inundated with those things because I don't think that's going to be very good for the city. So I'm sorry I don't have the best delivery, but I'm just passionate about that. I don't want to see this city that's going to be in the process of being transformed into something great ended up with these type of businesses, right? We already have liquor stores on every corner, check cash replaced at eight times more concentration in black neighborhoods, unhealthy food options. Now you're adding this element. So let's, as we transform Hawthorne Boulevard, let's just make sure that we keep a hand on those type of licenses, those type of businesses. I'd appreciate your cooperation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. If you could introduce yourself, come on up. Yeah, hi.
Hello, good evening. My name's Allison.
We want to hear you, so if you could just speak into the mic.
Hello, good evening. My name's Allison, and we are.
We still can't hear you.
All right, you guys. All right, let her, let her.
We want to hear.
Let her speak, let her speak. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Go ahead, go ahead, honey.
You can hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, we are students at Longdale High School, and we are currently working in a project for our honors history class. The project's title is Civics Engagement Project. And in this project, we have to contribute to our community, to better our community. And we would like to do that by putting a traffic sign.
My sister, about like a month ago, she got into a car crash on Inglewood and El Segundo, and which caused her to have a concussion.
So what we're suggesting is that there be a right-turn-only sign in front of the post office. And we were wondering what we could do to make that possible.
We are asking if you can, you know, help us or partner with us in some way to make the traffic sign possible.
Okay. We have somebody from the, either public safety or public safety area or Public Works that could meet with you right outside, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Let's give them a round of applause. For stepping up.
Good evening. Ruben Sanchez with the North Hawthorne Community Association. Glad to see all of you here. I wanted to, I'm glad that the subject came up in regards of trash and debris. I know North Hawthorne has pretty much slowed down with all the dumping and all that. And it's been, the only issue that we've had around there is like around the RFK Building. And also, like I said last time with the, that they have the barbed wire. Not very nice out there. Neighbors are very upset. But I know there's not a lot of representation in Manita Gardens, and I was out there not that long ago, and it's just ridiculous. The trash on that side is so bad. And it's like, I know you mentioned in regards of like, hey, we need to give citations to these apartment owners, right? Or do something, right? And somebody brought up saying, I'm not going to mention any names, but said, I have to catch them in the act. Well, that's not definitely true because with homeowners, if you were to throw trash in front of your, in front of your home on sidewalk, yeah, the code, I mean, Public Works will pick it up. Maybe Martinez will pick it up. But at some point, you're going to get a knock on the door from code enforcement saying you're not allowed to do that or else you're going to get citations. So something in regards of that ordinance or a policy where apartment owners need to be liable and hold to account when it comes to all this dumping because it's ridiculous. You said 70% of renters live in a certain area. The majority do live in the Manita Gardens. But one thing that a lot of folks don't understand is that 70% of renters, right, in the city of Hawthorne, less than 1% are actually lifelong renters in our city, okay? But yet, for some reason, every time the city has to cater to what we call in North Hawthorne, the drive-by renters, meaning the people who come in for, live here for less than two years, five years or so, and then they really don't care. They'll dump trash or something. We don't expect a lot from them. But yet, the homeowners or people who have invested interest in our community, they're the ones who suffer. But yet, when I've seen some of these homeowners, when I've seen these business owner here asking for support, when I've seen like Ramona Track coming up here asking for support, you know, it's very hard to say no, but they get, they say no to them. But yet, how do we attract a lot of these renters? What do we do as a city? We always give free stuff out. We're always talking about a poverty mindset, and that's what's being attracted. It's not here to offend anybody. It's not here to say, ah, you're doing this and this. You know, I know we have some high emotions sometimes on the stand here, but it's not about that. It's that we have to start thinking higher. And the reason is because the city of Hawthorne is worth a lot. We do have a lot of properties in the city of Hawthorne that are way over a million. And especially in North Hawthorne, where the values are going up, even in Manita Gardens, just anywhere in the South Bay. And you guys have to treat it as such and attract the right people. All right. All right, thank you. Minister Rob, have a good night.
Anyone else? If not, oh, go ahead, sir.
Yes, good afternoon to everybody on the city council. Mayor, my name is Deion Evans. I came here about four months ago. I think it was in like April or June, and I stated something about I was being taken advantage of by a business in Hawthorne. I was told to contact the city attorney. I spoke to the city attorney. Nothing was done, no audit was done. And as a result of it, another four months went by with me being taken advantage of as well. Today, I called the city license department, and I spoke to a Chantel Dixon. From the understanding of the law that I read, you're supposed to confront the, confront the office that handles transit occupancy tax for the city of Hawthorne, which is what I did when I went to the city license department. She wouldn't listen to me. She wouldn't conversate with me. I couldn't get no conversation in with her. I asked to speak to her supervisor. She told me that was Vaughn Norris. So I sent the email to Mr. Norris today. I didn't receive a response. I didn't receive an answer or anything. So I felt that I had to come here and confront several of the council members to let them know that when I spoke to you guys back in April, I was telling you guys about businesses that were violating the rules of Hawthorne, and you guys can impose fines that would benefit the citizens of Hawthorne and also help the people such as myself who's in a bad situation because I just became homeless on August 16th of 2024. So I've been, I've been living in this place for 11 months. And as a result of living in this place for 11 months, for the whole 11 months, I've been taken advantage of. I'm a veteran of the United States Navy. I served on the USS Nimitz. This is not what I expect when I live in a city. I'm expecting the city to protect the citizens from any harm or anything that can be caused damage to the citizen in the city of Hawthorne, either that be white-collar crime or criminal crime. When I go to my city offices and try to confront the offices, I'm not expecting to get into an argument with the manager of the city, of the city license department. You guys give the license to these businesses. You guys have to hold them accountable for their actions. If they're violating the law, why isn't nobody going out to audit these businesses? So the city of Hawthorne can benefit from the fines and everything that you guys would impose on them from violating the law, which is what the city attorney is supposed to do. If this was addressed, I wouldn't be standing here today. I had colon cancer surgery on, 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 April 16th. This is not something I should be having to deal with as a veteran of the United States Navy. And I'm asking my, my city councilman to investigate some of the complaints that we make against the businesses. My complaint is legitimate. My complaint has merit, and still, I don't get no help from nobody in the city of Hawthorne. Can somebody please tell me why?
We can address the issue from the dais, so maybe somebody can have a conversation with you.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I did receive an email from Mr. Deion. I think that's his name.
Yes.
I haven't investigated. That's why I did not respond. So I will, once investigated your concern, I will respond back to you. But just for the record, you emailed me around 3:00 PM?
Right.
Okay, but I will get back with you.
Okay.
No problem, thank you.
Thank you, sir, for expressing yourself. Okay. I know there's a lot of applicants for the commissions. We're going to be doing that pretty soon, but we want to just finish up with the comments, okay? Right, go ahead, ma'am. Hi.
Hello, good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Carol Mastin, and I live in Holly Park area. And I just wanted to stand here today and thank Mr. Vaughn Norris and Ms. Katrina Manning. On last Friday, I spoke about the trash on the overpass on 119th, from 119th and Van Ness, from one hundred and nineteenth and Van Ness, uh the one oh five overpass that has been there for like over maybe ten years because I walk down that s- that street just about every other day or every day. Well, Katrina had volunteered to walk with me to see the, the area, but fortunately, on Saturday, the Martinez company came out and cleaned it up and I'm just wanna say, if you see something, say something and if you say it to the right people, then something will be done. I am a living witness and I just wanna let you know, I thank you very much, it's clean for now and but all that uh shrubbery that has been there for like years is gone and I thank you and I thank you for your involvement and for getting it cleaned up for Holly Park, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir?
All right, good evening, city council, uh just have something really quick to add, I think our woman's gonna be happy about this, the Dodgers five Brewers one final.
Our communication is close ordered. All right, I think we were, Mr. Taya might have gone to the bathroom, could somebody just go make sure that he could come back because I, uh, I would like to move the uh commission appointments to the front, please? All right. So I wanna commend all, I wanna commend the applicants to apply for these commissions. Uh we do have some uh additional interested individuals for the youth commission, so we're hoping to maybe place him in another, another commission real soon. So these are the nominations for, for commissioners for planning parks, recreation and fine arts. And as you know, we've had a, uh, we need to make sure that our, all our commissions are fully uh complimented so that we can have quorums and uh we could have business running smoothly within the city, okay? I actually think it's good that it took a couple hours to get to this point because this gives you a flavor as to the length of some of the meetings you're gonna be having, right? So in a sense, it's good, but um not all the meetings are gonna be this lengthy, so uh just realize that we're expected, I'm gonna be making the nominations, my colleagues will be approving one by one, but you're expected to give us one hundred percent of yourself in these roles, okay? Very important, so. You can stand in place, uh once I name, uh call your name, you don't have to move, you don't have to come up to the podium and then we'll, uh, I'll make the nomination and then we'll vote accordingly and at the end, um we'll collect all of you up here upfront so that our city clerk could uh swear you in, okay? So I, we're hoping that it's a full set today. So I would like to nominate Mike Taya to the planning commission, if you could please stand, sir? Yeah, just stand in place. Do I have a second for him?
Second.
Okay.
Two seconds.
Please vote.
I'm sorry. The voter reflects mayor and council voting, yes.
So. Please take a seat. Okay.
Good.
You gotta get sworn in first, sir. Steven Nellman, I nominate you for the planning commission.
Second.
Uh please vote.
Yeah. The votes are in.
Okay, thank you.
Voter reflects mayor and council voting, yes.
Congratulations, sir. I'd like to nominate Greg Gwich, citizen, for the Parks Recreation and Fine Arts Commission.
Second.
One second, one second. All right.
It passed on.
Waiting for Ann, waiting for councilwoman. It's, wait a minute, hold on, we gotta vote again.
That, that was just a residual, right? Yeah, 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 yeah.
Now. The voter reflects mayor and council voting, yes.
Congratulations, sir. Jessica Romero, uh I would like to nominate you to the Parks Recreation and Fine Arts Commission.
Second.
Please vote.
The voter reflects mayor and council voting, yes.
Excellent, congratulations, ma'am. I would like to nominate Juanita Douse to the Senior Citizens Commission.
Second.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Please vote.
Voter reflects mayor and council voting, yes.
Uh I would like to nominate Richard Harrison to the youth commission, if you could please stand, sir? Some new energy, uh you know, we showed you energy and it'd be great to have you lead the youth commission. Hopefully I may be president, so.
Second.
Okay, everyone, please vote, oh, second, I make the nomination seconded, please vote.
Wait for councilwoman Johnson. The voter reflects mayor and council voting, yes.
Congrats.
I have a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget.
Oh, my good lord. Thank you, sir. Congratulations. Uh I would like, oh, by the way, all, do you have all the, all the, all the applications are completely filled out, right?
Yes.
Okay, so just informing everybody, complete, okay?
Background check?
Uh, all, all the sections have been filled out, so.
That's not my question, the question is, there's a backgrounds check that needs to be filled out, given authorization?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
It's been filled out, yeah. I nominate Jesus Limus, please stand in place, uh I would like to nominate you to the uh youth commission, sir.
Second.
Please vote.
The voter reflects mayor and council voting, yes.
Congratulations, sir. Uh, okay, and uh Nusha Samida, if you could please stand in place, I would like to nominate you to the youth commission as well.
Second.
Please vote.
Voter reflects mayor and council voting, yes.
Thank you, guys, um so uh if, uh we, we wanna swear you in in front of everybody, okay, so if uh you could all, uh, what, what should we do, should we maybe have a, do the, let's do, everybody come up to the front right here and after that, just like a twenty second, after that, a twenty second comment to the, to the community at the podium.
I can stand where they are, really, my voice is probably loud enough here, just raise your right hand. I say aye, everyone say their name. Aye.
Aye.
I solemnly affirm.
You solemnly swear.
I solemnly affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Thank you, guys. If all the candidates can form a single file line right before, right behind the podium because, single file line, because uh I'm gonna just simply ask you just to say hello to the community, shouldn't go beyond twenty seconds, thirty seconds, go ahead, sir, and then, once you finish, you can make your way up here so we can take a picture.
Listen, it's a real pleasure to, a privilege to be able to serve the city of Hawthorne again. I've been in the city a long time and it's a real privilege and, and an honor, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Juanita Douse and it is a privilege to serve on the senior citizen commissioner again and I can bring a lot of good new ideas for the city and for the seniors, thank you again.
Good evening, mayor and city council, first wanna thank you for entrusting me with this opportunity, uh I won't let you down and uh can't wait to get started on the planning commission, thank you.
All right.
Yes, mayor, it's Richard Harrison, uh mayor, city councilman and staff, thank you so much for the opportunity, I'm looking forward to serve the children are our future and I'm gonna give this everything I have and I'll make you guys proud, thank you.
Hello, good evening, thank you for having me, my name is Jessica Romero, I've had the pleasure to work with a few of you, uh even volunteer time or even with our Hawthorne School District uh events, so I appreciate uh you guys having me and you guys voting for me, so great things to come, thank you.
Hello, my name is Nusha and I'm privileged to be a part of the youth commission, I would do my utmost best to provide the best for my community, thank you.
Hello, my name is Jesus Limus and I was, I'm honored to be nominated for the youth commissioner and I would do my best to serve my community.
I'd like to thank the Academy Award for this event, thank you very much, thanks to my mom. Actually, on the Bible says to seek the good of the city if you're a citizen of it and that's what I think we're all gonna hope to do, to seek the, the benefit of Hawthorne, so I thank you for the honor.
All right, um, yeah, we, we're ready for the picture, maybe the, all the commissioners by themselves and then we could join them or something after that gets taken?
And I have to say, Mr. Mayor, thank you for bringing all the nominees forward, so that's uh good to see.
It's a good group, right?
Yes, very good, thank you.
Oh.
All right, here we go, and, and, three, two, one, stay right there.
Yeah, cuz my leg is killing me.
All right.
We should stand up here so we can get.
Yeah.
Should we stand up here? Yeah. Yeah, it would be best because, yeah.
We'll do one back there and we'll do a group shot with everyone down here.
Do you wanna squeeze, wanna squeeze?
Yeah, come on, right here.
You're good, you're good.
There you go.
And three, two, one, and three, two, one. All right, let's do one with everyone just for.
Okay, let's go.
Down here.
Oh.
You have to come down.
I don't have to, okay.
You guys just.
Yeah.
Come closer to you. Keep coming, that way they'll be behind you. Keep, keep coming over.
That's good.
The edges are thin. If anyone's lying inside, right there. Perfect, that's perfect, right? Here, perfect, all right. All right, you guys are good. And then three, two, one, and three. Thank you.
Done. Yeah.
with terms expired, uh might be affected and be uh, uh, so if, please research that and just issue a letter of thanks on behalf of the city for their service, maybe a proclamation for them, okay? City clerk's consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor, I have four items on the city, city clerk's consent calendar, they're item six through nine for your consideration and approval. Item six, the city treasurer requests approval of the warrants. Item seven, approval of city council meeting, meeting minutes for the regular meetings of June tenth, two thousand twenty-five, July eighth, two thousand twenty-five, August twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-five, and September ninth, two thousand twenty-five. Item eight, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and ordinances on Tuesday, September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five's agenda for adoption. Item nine, resolution eight five five eight, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California proclaiming support for women basketball players and urging the Women's National Basketball Association to negotiate equitable contracts that provide wages and benefits and improve working conditions that prioritize their health, safety and holistic well-being for adoption.
I make them.
To the chair.
Oh, go ahead, yes.
I think August twenty-sixth, I wasn't here, can I, I don't think I can.
You vote anyways, you have to, yeah, you have to vote anyways, yes.
I second.
Yep, yeah.
Okay.
Everyone vote.
I learned something new, she has to vote anyways.
The votes are in. Voter reflects mayor and council voting, yes.
Ordinances, please, ma'am.
Item ten, now is the time and place to declare sealed request for business award a contract for the city of Hawthorne, Me, California Commercial Facade Project. There were three bids received, the prices are as follows. A N M, A M N M Construction, no bid, Coral Construction, one hundred eighty-nine thousand, Dan Contractor, one hundred thirty-five, six hundred thousand. Recommended motion, staff recommends the city council accept the proposals for recommendation and study, and two, authorize the city manager to, to receive and award the contract to the lowest responsible bidder.
I'll move. Hmm? I moved. Can I get a second?
Please vote.
The votes are in. Voter reflects mayor and council voting, yes.
Okay, there are no public hearings at this time and there, and there are no general matters items at this time. City manager's consent calendar, ma'am, can you just go through the list?
Yes, um, item eleven, alley improvement project, project two five dash zero eight, out to bid. Item twelve, appointment of volunteers to the General Plan Advisory Committee, GPAC. Item thirteen, professional services agreement between city of Hawthorne and Deckard Technologies to provide monitoring and compliance assistance with short-term rentals. Item fourteen, accepting the grant of funds from the US Department of Homeland Security Federal Emergency Management Agency to update the city of Hawthorne's hazard mitigation plan. Item fifteen, progress payment number eight in the amount of seven hundred eighty-four thousand, four hundred eleven ninety, four hundred eleven dollars, ninety-one cents due to P C N three Inc. of Los Alamos, California for city of Hawthorne New Senior Center, project number two four dash zero three. Item sixteen, agreement between the city of Hawthorne and Constant and Associates Inc. Consultant to update the city's local hazard mitigation plan. Item seventeen, progress payment number one, the amount of four hundred, three thousand, seven hundred sixteen dollars, ninety-four cents due to Chapman Coast Roof Company Incorporated of Fullerton, California for Hawthorne Police Department's Roof Replacement Project, project two five dash zero nine. Item eighteen, progress payment number five and final acceptance for the third contract year and award of maintenance contract extension to Martinez Landscape Company Incorporated of Somar, California for general maintenance, project two two dash zero five. Item nineteen, fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six blanket purchase orders for the housing department. Item twenty, progress payment number one, the amount of three hundred fifty-four thousand, three hundred thirty-three dollars, eighteen cents due to American Wholesale Lighting of Livermore, California for the police department lighting project. Item twenty-one, agreement between city of Hawthorne and city of Gardena for supplemental law enforcement, medical director services. Item twenty-two, Measure M Funding Agreement, M M five five zero seven dot one eight between the city of Hawthorne and the Metropolitan Transportation Authority to design street improvements for the hundred thirty-fifth Street Improvement Project and appropriation of one hundred sixty thousand dollars from the general fund balance for this project. Item twenty-three, Measure M Funding Agreement, M M five zero seven dot one nine between the city of Hawthorne and the Metropolitan Transportation Authority to design street improvements for the Inglewood Avenue Improvement Project and appropriation of one hundred thirty thousand dollars from the general fund balance for this project. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the city manager's consent calendar, may I have a motions, may I have a motion to approve items eleven through twenty-three? To the chair.
Yes.
To the chair, thank you. Can I please pull some items?
Yes.
I'd like to pull number twelve, number thirteen and number twenty-two for discussion, please, everything else, I'm, everything else, I'm good.
Twelve? Twelve?
Twelve, thirteen and twenty-two and I'll make a motion for everything else.
Second.
For the clarification for colleagues, that's gonna be eleven, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one and twenty-three, correct?
That's nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, yes, and twenty-three, correct.
Please vote.
The votes are in. Voter reflects mayor and council voting, yes.
Discussion, item twelve?
Uh, item number twelve, I just wanna truly uh commend those that applied uh to be part of the volunteers for the General Plan Advisory Committee, I just wanna commend Greg and the city departments that are working hard on that. I've been watching the social media site asking for volunteers and uh talking about uh the, the task and the work ahead with regards to the scope of work, so I just wanted to, you know, take, pull that one specifically to thank staff for their progress and more importantly to those that um applied and were selected to be part of the advisory committee, so congratulations to all of those individuals and that's item number twelve, I'll make a motion.
Second.
Please vote. Please vote.
The votes are in. Voter reflects mayor and council voting, yes.
Discussion, thank you, ma'am, discussion, item thirteen?
Thank you, I'd like to just make mention to the housing department and to uh those that ultimately made the selection for the uh entity uh for uh monitoring and compliance, I've been um online.
I've been online checking out the business myself and I wasn't too reassured with regards to the score that they have, like a 3%. You know, usually companies or businesses that are really great are scoring higher, you know, than five, maybe, you know, 10. So just concerning, I don't know how ultimately they were selected, but I do ask that the first year especially, that they are, you know, held accountable and held to a higher standard. And I want to make sure that the housing committee understands that myself, as a council member, wants to assure that we're getting our money's worth and we're getting actual, actual quantified data. So thank you. I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Second.
Please vote.
The votes are in. The voter reflects mayor and council voting, yes.
Okay, was there a discussion on item?
22.
22?
Thank you, mayor. I wanted to ask because I noticed it's 135th Street and I know 135th Street, from what I understand, are we talking the one in between Crenshaw and Prairie? No? Where is 135th Street Improvement Project?
Good evening. This is 135th between Aviation and Glasgow.
Oh, okay. I apologize. I wanted just clarification and it's my air, so thank you so much. I'll go ahead and approve that, make a motion on that. I was under the impression it was in between Crenshaw and Prairie.
Second.
Yep.
It's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
The votes are in. The voter reflects mayor and council voting, yes.
Thank you, mayor.
Yes. There's no city attorney consent calendar items at this time? Councilmember Manny, please proceed with your item.
Thank you, mayor. I believe a couple of council meetings that we had, the carpenters came and gave us a presentation, actually a couple of times about transparency ordinance. And they have asked us that any construction company above a certain amount, basically let us know if they've done anything illegal or have any legal fines against them. And so I'm going to refer to David, our city attorney, to further explain that and why I'm asking my council colleagues to support their ordinance. David, please.
Of course, yes. I can advise this council that there are just a few jurisdictions at this time that have adopted such an ordinance. So for example, we have the cities of Carson, Compton, Chula Vista, and the county of San Diego, which would be the biggest, and there are a few others. To date, I haven't seen any legal challenges with regards to those ordinances. In general, these ordinances require developers typically for larger projects to pull permits and disclose any prior state or federal labor violations within the three, within the past three to five years. But it should be noted that the city, through its Public Works Department, already does a very good job of making sure that any contractor who wants to pull a permit is in full compliance with any applicable state and federal labor standards, such as the federal labor standards and the Davis Bacon Act, which requires that employees are paid prevailing wages. So I can also add that contractor violations, you might be able to find them already on the state contractor's licensing board. But other than that, as this body knows, it's within your full discretion to decide whether or not you want to adopt such an ordinance or not.
So at this time, I'd like to hear feedback from my colleagues as to whether they would support this. Hello?
To the chair. Thank you. Just for clarification, councilmember, this is literally the fourth time this item has come to the council. And the very first time, I gave a very lengthy explanation. Considering that I worked for the state assembly and the state senate, I worked with a lot of contractors and I worked with a lot of unions. And there is a state board business licensing regulations processing. And that was one of the discussions I made and similar to what the city attorney just made mention. So I really don't have much more to say, other than I'm familiar with what they're trying to do. However, I'm just going to go with my prior statements.
I believe this is the first time I've actually asked for a vote. I think before it was just providing information in the presentation. But I don't believe in the past I've actually asked for a vote. So this particular time, that's what I was asking for.
Mr. City Attorney, if there's failure of a second, what happens?
Thank you.
We have elected officials' reports. City Treasurer?
Good evening. Thank you, everyone, for coming out. I just wanted to point out, even though he's probably left by now, congratulations to Pastor Jefferson. I, you know, I've worked with him a few years when I was over at Semeron, so he was always helping provide, you know, many of the student families with food and whatnot. So I was always appreciated, appreciative of him then. Let's see. Oh, along with Councilwoman Faye Johnson, we took a tour of the Publix work yard and to see how it was coming along. It looked great. I mean, excited to see it completed in all its glory. So that was nice to see. The Hispanic Heritage Celebration was great. It was a great turnout, great food. So congrats to the city clerk on her efforts and a great job. The Touch a Truck event Saturday was great. It was a lot of people, great weather, lots of fun. We had fun out there. It was good to see all the kids. So many horns and sounds, but they had fun, enjoyed. It was good to see all the smiles on everyone's faces. Congratulations to all the employees. Yeah, that would have been a hard one to pick between. So it was good to see them all congratulated and, and, and taking time out. And we thank you, I thank you for your efforts and am always very appreciative of staff. So congratulations to all the award winners. They were very deserving. Congratulations to all those appointed to the commissions. That was good to see. I was so glad to see Ms. Ramaral. I work with her all the time over at Eucalyptus. She is such a sweetheart. So yes, I've donated many popsicles to their popsicle sale, but it's so glad to see her taking part in the commission. She's always been asking, what could she do more in the community? So it's good to see her take a seat on one of the commissions. I look forward to the many good things she will add to that. I wanted to take time to point out that this is Branskis, her Awareness Month. One is pointed out in the city. Happy birthday to Councilwoman Manny.
Thank you.
Wishing you the best. Hope we get out of here on time so you can enjoy some of what's left of your birthday. Wishing you many more.
Thank you.
I wanted to say happy birthday to her. Thank you, everyone, and good night.
Councilwoman Angie Reyes English wants to leave a happy birthday for her colleague.
I didn't know it was your birthday. I, I'm, I'm, why didn't you say anything? Why didn't you say anything?
One?
Come on, you guys. One, two, three.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Councilmember Manny. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you. Happy birthday, Katrina, I didn't know.
Thank everyone for coming out. I wanted to thank everyone who attended the Hispanic Heritage Month Celebration. It was a lot of fun. And with that being said, I really want to thank Dulce and Jerry. You all are, putting that together was like amazing because of your efforts. And I just really want to point that out. I want to thank the staff here as a whole, because I'm here all the time working with people. I know how much we're doing with little, what little we have. With, you know, short-staffed and how we share people. Sometimes we have to move one person to another department just to help out. And I just want to say that I see what everyone's doing here. I really do appreciate everyone here. And as you all know, that I hope to, you know, continue to be a contributor. So any way that I can continue to be helpful, you know, don't hesitate to ask. I wanted to also make a note about the Hawthorne Chamber event at Tapville on the 22nd. It is, you know, a little bit earlier in the afternoon, but it's primarily for businesses, for business owners. I just want to invite business owners to come out and to meet other business owners. And we just really want to create a nice environment for business owners that we know each other and we can reach out to one another if we have questions or concerns. It's at 3 o'clock. I want to thank all the presenters. I want to thank Pastor Jefferson for his amazing work in the community. Thank you, DJ, for everything that you do. And congratulations to Hawthorne Schools and Brian Markarian. I am a very proud member of the Community School Advisory Council for Jefferson Elementary. It is a pleasure for me to volunteer my time there. I'm honored to do so. And I would also like to say happy belated birthday to Gordon. He comes in here all the time and says, since October 8th. And I think that just passed, so we should wish him a happy birthday. And I think that is, besides my happy birthday to Councilwoman Katrina Manning, she stole it before I got to it, so. But that's okay. We all wish you a very happy birthday and many more. And I wanted to ask your husband what kind of cake he likes, so I can make it for you.
Lemon.
Oh, wow. She told you.
Lemon, lemon.
That's a good one.
Councilwoman Faye Johnson?
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming and who still left, even those that were voluntold. We appreciate you guys being here. Again, thank you to Pastor Jefferson and his church, what he does for the community, the classes that he gives, the mentorship that he gives, the training that he gives. It's amazing what they're able to do. Congratulations to all the Good Neighbor Awards. I agree. It's kind of hard to beat the drone, though. I mean, when you buy a drone of your own, I don't know. But then, you know, I couldn't have chose. So it was great that everybody got it. And thank you very much for the Hispanic Heritage Month Celebration that we had here. It was jam-packed, almost not able to move around. It was such a great opportunity and good food, very good food. And Touch a Truck this year was outstanding. Want to do a shout out to our Public Works, our city manager, our community services, and last but not least, our media department for doing our social media all the time. They're at all the events. They're out there in the sun chasing people down, trying to get comments, trying to get a shot. And it's really nice to see them, that they're always there. And they are the ones that bring the attention to the city by doing really good posts on our social media pages. So it's really important. And Eric Chavez and his team are doing a great job. Congratulations to all the new commissioners that we brought on board this evening. I'm excited about the wonderful things that they're going to be able to do for the community. And finally, just wanted to share a little bit about the property at 3136 West Rosecrans. This property presents a prime opportunity for vibrant mixed-use development with ground floor retail, community uses, upper floor, market rates, and affordable housing. It's also, you can, we can also have potential flexible offices and innovative space. Our environmental assessment and remediation has been completed and the site is zoned for both commercial and residential use. It's, it would truly support a life, work, play type of a campus. It gives great visibility where it's at. It's on a major spot proximity to SpaceX, Boeing, LAX, all right there on Rosecrans. The site could serve both our residents and the local workforce while enhancing public amenities such as like pocket parks and rooftop gardens. I personally, as a council member, would like to recommend that we do a community town hall to gather input and ideas from residents and the stakeholders on the potential development concepts, ensuring that this property will reflect what Hawthorne needs and our vision.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Katrina Manning, please.
Thank you. I'd like to say first, thank you so much for wishing me a happy birthday. I'm hoping that the rest of the council people will give me a birthday present by not talking the rest of the night, so I can finish what I have left. So that would be a great present if you can shorten what you got to say to the next one. Okay, so I'm gonna follow that myself. I'm gonna say ditto to all the stuff that they already said. As far as the events, I did go to the Senior Resource Fair, the Hispanic Heritage Month, the Community Safety Leadership Awards. I was there with Hugo Ross. Also, real quick, I went to the CBC in DC, which is the Legislative Black Caucus. And there, the main topic was AI, coming into AI. The importance of learning AI right now while everybody is at the same level. So I could not, they could not stress that enough at the conference. Every workshop I went to, that's what the main topic was, is AI. I also appreciate, really truly appreciate, the legal dumping presentation. I'm so ecstatic about that, because I do get a lot of calls and texts as it regards to that. Two more things that I want to say is, Von, moving forward as it relates to the sale of, the purchase of any real property, I want to be sure that the city council is providing all transactional documents related to the deal before completion. The second thing that I want to say is, we are thriving as a city right now. We have a lot of projects in the pipeline. And every surrounding city that has exponentially have grown has had an Economic Development Director. And so, Von, I'm going to ask you if you can look into how the city of Hawthorne can hire an Economic Development Director. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm done.
Councilwoman Angie Reyes English?
Thank you, mayor. Congratulations to all of our commissioners this evening. I look forward to seeing the work that you have ahead of you and reporting out every now and then to council, so that you could let us know how you're doing. And if there are needs in your commission post, please let the council members know so that we could assist you on that. I also want to commend Pastor Jefferson and Del Air Baptist Church for 80 years. Again, great, great work that the pastor has provided, him and his family. I can't say enough. And to all of our churches and especially our church community for everything that you do in assisting families in need and those that need a place to stay. Thank you, and we commend you for what you're doing in the community as well. I'd like to just thank again the Public Works for the presentation with regards to bulky items. I think that was great work. I look forward to January, looking for additional staff and additional trucks to be able to pick up bulky items. I still want to hold public, Republic Services accountable to assure that they're doing their work, contracted work, and that they're doing their fair share. So this is not to take away from their responsibilities, but to do more and to work harder to assure that we're addressing all of Hawthorne versus just, you know, a spot here and a spot there. So I really look forward to January and seeing how that additional work... how that additional workforce is going to benefit our city in the long run. So thank you to the departments that made that happen. And Von, to the school district, congratulations on your numbers. Again, kudos to the leadership and everyone's teamwork in those efforts. And thank you for coming and reporting out to the council. I appreciate that. Mayor Montero, I think that's great that we see our school come out and talk to us. Yes, yes, absolutely. This is, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so I want to make sure that we include that in a resolution to assure that we have Breast Cancer Awareness Month at our next council meeting. And then I also want to, with that, include the October Domestic Violence Prevention Awareness. So we, both of those. We got those, Von? The resolutions, both of those? The Breast Cancer Awareness Month and our Domestic Prevention Awareness. Okay? Resolutions? Okay, thank you. You got it? Yeah, okay. Okay. Thank you.
Proclamation for you.
Yes, proclamation, well, yes, that's, and we always bring them in, right? We always bring them in to honor them. The, who is it, Von? The New Star? Yes, Family Justice, absolutely. There's a couple of events that I want to make mention. And to our employees, Brandon, Catherine, Angelie, and Officer Santos, congratulations on your honoring this evening. Thank you for what you guys do. The Hispanic Heritage Month Celebration that we had, I mean, that was really great. If you had an opportunity to come, it was a great event. Lots of participants, great food, great synergy. I want to thank everyone that provided the proclamation for myself. And again, Von, for what he's doing with his team of committees, because there's such, so many events that we do. And the only way we do it the right way is by forming committees. And every time I'm in the manager, city manager's office, there's always committee meetings happening for one thing or another. So thank you, Von, for that. I also just want to make mention the Halloween Spectacular Carnival that's coming up, Saturday, October 25th. Also Hawthorne Teen Center, the 17th Annual Anniversary. And then I'm going to say that for you to say. And then for all the presenters that presented today, including our Police Department for the Medical Services, great work there. I want to address something that is somewhat sensitive in nature, but that just really, I think, has to be addressed. But before I do that, let me just acknowledge our City of Hawthorne Property Tax Newsletter. If you had an opportunity to see that, we are reflecting a 3.9% increase year over year, aligning with LA County's growth. So I just want to acknowledge that the historical value changes from new construction to property 13 inflation adjustments to prior year transfers, appeals and adjustments and other, including property highlights, which is, you know, large properties that are now increased in value. So kudos to at least four of them that we have here in our city that went from 84 million to 100.7 million, one from 7.4 to 8.2, and one with a 70% increase from 3 mil to 969 million, and another from 3 mil to 19, like 1941% as a result of ownership changes. And top 10 owners here in Hawthorne that are making roughly 13.86% of the total value, which is somewhere in the billions. And so we just need to, again, recognize that the City of Hawthorne is, has value for many, especially those looking to do business in the South Bay. It has the accessibility that it needs for these businesses that want that flexibility. And so I can't, again, commend the city and what they're doing to assure that we have a piece of the pie too, when it comes to purchasing properties that we could ultimately benefit from, whether it's housing, or businesses, or just making residual income. And again, it goes to the teamwork from the city manager's office to other departments. So thank you for all of that. So going back to what I was going to say, there was a, there was an email that was sent to all council that, you know, really upset me. And I'm going to tell you exactly why it upset me. And it should upset you too, as leaders. And I'm going to give some further instructions on what I'd like to see done. There was an email that came to the council members, pretty much from a union group, that has taken, taken it upon themselves to go to our work sites and sit there and bother our workforce. What I mean by bother, I'm talking about bullying, harassing, intimidating, and that just infuriates me. I, for one, support our workforce 110%, 200%. And when we have a workforce that's being selected through RFPs, contractors, subcontractors, various professions, I support that. And for any entity, or anyone, or anybody, or any man, or woman, that thinks that they could go out to a work location here, especially Hawthorne, and sit at work site locations and bother the employers there by literally getting out of their vehicles and approaching them and questioning them, is uncalled for. And, again, very disrespectful. So I'm going to give some instruction here. I would like to assure that this doesn't happen again to any of our work site locations, whether it's City Hall, Capitol Projects here at City Hall, whether it's our senior center, whether it's our new Public Works Department, or any other pipeline work that we have in the city, whether it's street work, streetscape, lighting, et cetera. I want to assure that our workers are safe. I want to assure that our workers can do their job without being questioned by an entity that has no business in our city doing this type of task or work. So I'd like to see a cease and desist sent to back Local 4, and include that in the cease and desist to that location, a stay away order. I would also like to see signage at the work site at Public Works, which is Dodie and El Segundo Boulevard, on the perimeter of the fencing, no trespassing. And I want that included in any other work site that we have, so that they are now put on notice. I don't think it's necessary. I don't think it's professional. I don't think it's needed. And if they want to know who did this, it's me, because I'm not going to stand for a bully, or any type of other person thinking that they could come and disturb our workforce and tell people how to do their job. So with that, again, infuriating, unnecessary. I support my workers, our workforce, and there's no, no need for it. We have enough bullies as it is in our government already. We have already enough, you know, folks trying to intimidate and harass, that I'm not going to bring it to the City of Hawthorne and our employees, so they could rest assured that they're safe. And I'm going to take it even further. Chief, and your command, I want to assure during real call that you are giving instructions to our work, to our police force, to take a little drive every now and then around our work sites, to assure that our workers are safe, and that there isn't any outside agencies or sources disturbing the work that they're doing, because they feel inferior, think that they can. Again, not necessary, not needed. And I want to make sure that my instructions were clear, and that those that are doing it stops immediately. Thank you.
Okay. All right. We're good? Okay. Mayor Proton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. Thank you for those listening at home. I'm going to be a little bit longer tonight, okay? I have a lot of stuff to talk about. First of all, I want to say thank you to all the presenters, you know, from the book, I mean, on DJ and Jose, and thank you, Public Works, thank you, Von, for taking initiative on that. Dr. Marcarion for the Hawthorne School District outcomes and success. The Supplement Law Enforcement Service, the Dr. Naroga, and the Police Department for the medical service. And like I said, that Hawthorne is always on the forefront of everything. So thank you again for that. We, we have a great regard for our PD and also for the doctor that is half-saving more than 270 lives. So that's outstanding. Yeah, like, like I said, you know, the Senior Resource Fair was very good. So I want to thank the senior, senior commissioners and Diane for putting all the resources together. I myself took advantage of some of them. So thank you very much. The Hispanic Heritage Month was very good. Thank you, Dana and Dulce and Jerry and all the committee, Kwanah, Von, myself, put all that things together. So thank you very much. Also, there was a grand open of the, the new owners of the Guy Harker Real Estate. So actually, that was pretty nice to see that the Guy Harker Real Estate business will continue to go on, despite Guy Harker's been in the, somewhere in the heavens. Pastor Jefferson, like I said, you know, he's a man, has been in 25 years in our community, and he have brought a lot of resources. And I commend for all his service. I did attend on behalf of our mayor, actually, the Holly Mitchell, you know, have a meeting with all the mayors in her 2nd district. So I did attend that meeting on behalf of our mayor, because he couldn't do it, because he teach on Wednesday night. So we talk about, you know, the 2nd district. We talk about poverty. The 2nd district is one of the highest poverty areas that she has. We talk about homeless. We talk about in campus and how we're going to clean it up. So we talk about potential, you know, downfall of the sales tax is going down for the county. So potentially, it's going to impact Prop A, that is the homeless. They estimated maybe $66 million of reduction in the sales tax coming up. So just keep those on notes. Also, I attend a whole day retreat with the Clean Power Alliance. You know how the Clean Power Alliance is the renewable clean energy, and we are part of it, is about 37 cities and two counties. So we talk about, you know, building more asset ownership, and also how can every city goes to 100% green by 2035. So that was, it was very good. As you know, the governor on Friday signed SB 79, right? And then SB 79, he signed it, but it will not take effect until January 1st, 2029. So what's that mean is, every developer can come to our city and build apartment buildings, high-rise, half a mile from the train station with no parking. So imagine that we have Hawthorne and Imperial, we have a train station there, Crenshaw and 105 right there, right? And also aviation and marine, because that station, it called Redondo Beach Station, but it's Hawthorne. So all these corridor that is half a mile from a metro station or bus line can come to our city and build apartment buildings, okay? So, but it's not going to start until 2029. And I'm pretty sure some of the charter cities might going to sue the state. But for us, we, general law city, we cannot sue the state on this one. So just keep that in mind. It's coming, okay? Also, we got, we got a note from the Medical Red Cross is asking people to donate blood, because they have a shortage of blood, okay? So they're having a campaign going on. People that donate blood from October 20 to November 16 will receive $10 gift card for, for Amazon gift card, right? And also, they will be qualified to enter to win $5,000 gift card down the road. So, so donate blood to a Medical Red Cross, because they have a shortage of blood going on in the area, okay? The other thing that, yesterday, I went to the South Bay Cock meeting. So there is a South Bay Cock orientation for staff on October 22nd. So Von, see if you can send some staff to South Bay Cock on Wednesday, October 22nd, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m., because the South Bay Cock is giving us, is, you know, we are part of the South Bay Cock, the 16 cities, and we depend a lot of them for transportation money, for homeless money. And believe it or not, even maybe they're going to help us out build the corridor project over there with some affordable housing. Also, on October 30, 2025, South Bay Cock is having artificial intelligence form series, AI, Thursday, October 30, from 3:30 to 5:00 p.m., okay? So also, please, on Thursday night, if you don't have nothing else to do, just come to the Memorial Center. The Hawthorne Presidents Council is having the 43rd Annual Community Dinner that is going to benefit the Holiday Assistance Program. And, you know, those are the time that we buy all the gift cards and toys to the Hawthorne School District children. So $7 for dinner, children under 10, $3.50. So come down for dinner and bring your check and donate, okay? And my last thing, I think I have to say...
Hold on, real quick. I need you to be very, I need you to respect while he's speaking.
Say something.
Oh, my God.
You're not respecting the fact that he's speaking, and we have a council here, while you're in the back talking here, talking there, talking here. Why don't you stay in your seat and listen to what's going on?
All right. I'm going to invoke the rules of decorum, which are being broken by Councilwoman Angie Reyes English, where she's directing the direct, pointed language at elected officials. It's out of place, and we're going to ask you to abide by that, okay?
I'm going to ask you to do the same, because Alex Vargas, the mayor, is doing the same and more. And I'll bring that to the council at the next council meeting.
Your out of order, Councilwoman Angie Reyes English. And while he was speaking, you were already mumbling, okay? So I'm going to ask you to, I'm going to ask you to control yourself and refrain...
You got the nerve, mumbling. You're back here talking to the attorney. When he's speaking, I'm sitting in my seat.
I'm going to ask you to, you're out of order, ma'am.
No, you're out of order. You're out of order. You need to stay in your seat and listen to what's going on up here.
I'm going to ask you to refrain from speaking.
No, I'm not going to refrain, because everybody sees it. Stay in your seat. You're the one that's mumbling.
I need you to control your temper. I need you to control your anger.
You're the one. Control your mumbling.
Okay, we adults. Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, so also, I want to say thank you to Von for giving us the report on the telehealth van, okay? Thank you for the, for the statistics that you emailed us. I appreciate that. And also, I'm going to say that I applaud the sentiment of my councilwoman, Ms. Fay Johnson, on the property on 3136 West Rosecrans Avenue. Because as you know, you know, in the past, Hawthorne let a lot of asset goes to some private people, especially Caltrans property that was around the city, that was sold, and some, it went to the private developers. That's, until this day, still have not developed those, those properties. So, so Rosecrans is an opportunity for us, the City of Hawthorne, and the people of Hawthorne to decide what is going to go on that property. And it could be developed in short term. Let's say in two years, we can have something there. Not living for 25 years without develop, or 20 years. So we're going to do something about it. And for us to be in the forefront of economic development for South Bay, because we need it. We need it. Especially, we need, we need more, you know, restaurants. And we can actually, us develop to say, this is what we want. Build this restaurant, and let's get some providers to come and run it. So we cannot sit down and wait for somebody else to go buy their property and then sitting on it for 30 years. So the time that other people take control of our destiny is over. So we have a leadership here, and a great city manager, and a great department. and a great departments that have advised us that we have to do what's the best for our people. We were led to make decisions. And we are here to make right decisions. And we not, we might not be perfect. But we know the future of Hawthorne depends what we do now. So, in that note, I want to say good night and happy Halloween. And if you don't have nothing to do on Halloween night, come to the Muslaj, because I do have a party over there.
Okay, all right. Thank you guys all for being here. Thank you, sir. And I want to thank everybody who attended the Hispanic Heritage Month. I want to thank city council for supporting that event and allowing for the city staff to organize it. Thank you for all the volunteers and all the donors for the food and everybody who attended. It was great, right? The entertainment was good and a lot of great things happened. So, the Touch a Truck event also was a big success. So, you saw all the kids that were there, et cetera. So, it was just fun. It was just fun. It lasted three hours. The kids were running around. They kind of gave their parents a break when they got home, probably, took a nap, right? So, I think that that's pretty exciting. So, I like for staff to look into and to bring back for discussion, Mr. City Manager, the following. I would like to, for you guys to look at the logistics for setting aside for when the program registrations for all the Park and Recreation Days. So, maybe setting apart maybe one full day worth of time that Hawthorne City residents can apply for the different programs. Or maybe two days of registration. I don't know how you, how you're doing it right now. I mean, please correct me if it's already something that's taking place, but with the adequate proof of residency for those, for that period of time.
So, Mr. Mayor, staff is currently working on that. A directive was given maybe a month ago.
Okay.
We're working through the kinks, because as you know, we have county and city with the same zip. So, we're trying to work through the kinks on how to verify residents. So, staff is working on it. And we look to bring some to council in the next 30 days.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
All right. And with regards to the incidents at the job sites, I would like to have a special meeting at the next council meeting, closed-door meeting, to talk about, if it's possible, to get the details as to what the incidents were. Do you have the incidents? Do you, do you know who the perpetrators are? Because I don't feel comfortable moving ahead with the cease and desist letter until we get those details.
Okay, just.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
In response to your first question, at this, at this moment, I, I don't see a basis for closed session discussion on that. So, it's up for the council to decide.
Can the cease and desist later, letter be sent on behalf of the whole city at the direction of one council member?
There's a specific ordinance that, it's in our municipal code that talks about directions and instructions. And it's incumbent upon the mayor to determine whether or not he or she has the consensus. So far, I haven't heard any objections. So, it stands right now that she's requesting us, Councilmember Reyes is requesting a cease and desist letter.
Which union is this being directed to?
That would be for Councilman Reyes.
Do you not read your emails? It was sent to all of us and you as mayor last week.
I don't think that's what I was asking, right? But can somebody else kind of answer that for me, since she doesn't want to? What union are we talking about here? Anybody have any idea?
I apologize, mayor, shut down my computer. I don't have that information in front of me.
So, I like the information before cease and desist letter goes on on behalf of the whole city. I'd like to find out what the incidents are. Because if it's something that, I'm concerned about it, but I just want to like have details before we move forward with something like that. Because it's engaging with a, a labor union on behalf of the whole city. So, if, I want to be able to have some legs to stand on if they counter us, if we make a cease and desist letter.
Well, as it stands right now, it appears to be four to one.
Four to one what?
In support of the cease and desist letter.
Is that, is that the case? I mean, I'm not going to, I'm not.
To the chair, I'd like to have more information too.
Okay.
Everybody else's supportive of it? I just don't want to, I'm not saying that we don't have to do this.
Right.
Montero? No, I mean, it's if, if, how do we, who's it going to be directed to? You know what you need it is?
Okay. Next, there was a, something happened, so.
Isn't this a Brown Act violation? It's not on the agenda.
Well.
Wait, wait a minute, hold on real quick. All right, look, look, look. All right, let's just, let's just cut this off, okay? Everybody signed on to a decorum letter. Councilwoman Katrina Manning brought this on to us. She brought it forth. And I'm constantly getting interruptions by my council colleague over here, Councilwoman Angie Reyes English. And I need you to stop and abide by that same code of ethics or like code of decorum that you agreed to, okay?
You too, okay.
Please do not interrupt me when I'm speaking. Just tell me if you're finished, so I could continue.
No, go ahead.
Okay. So, I gave the floor, because it's part of my item, to Mayor Protem Alex Montero to answer specifics on this. Go ahead, sir. What do you have? Do you know who the, the union was?
Just clarify real quickly as to the, the question that was made by Councilmember Reyes English. It's not a Brown Act violation. You can give direction to staff. We're just seeking whether or not that direction is, is clear or not.
And who can answer which union it is?
I, I don't know.
Then how are we going to be?
Well, the councilwoman has the email, Mr. Mayor.
Everybody has, everybody has it.
It was directed to the city council on a violation at the Public Works yard on El Segundo.
Well, I didn't read the email, because I'm not always.
I understand that, but if you need more time to come back to the next meeting, but it was sent to all council members.
Which union is it? Okay. Okay, I don't feel comfortable making that directive. So, I just want to put that on record until I have the name of that union. That's it? All right. So, I want to thank everybody for being here today, for the, all the healthy discussions that we had up here on the council, at the council level. And I want to thank all those.
I'm sorry, I'm so sorry, mayor. We have to, I have to have clear direction here. So, Councilmember Johnson indicated that she wants further information.
I want further information.
So, that's two. So, is that, I need, we need direction from the council as a whole.
If, if, if the cease and desist, the desist letter is going to go through, at least I want to get that information of who's being directed to. I'm not going to sign on to that. You can exclude me from that, until I have that information, okay?
Okay.
I'm glad to support anything that's brought up by any of my council colleagues. But I need to have that information, okay? So, what do we, what was I saying?
I'm fine, good.
All right. I want to thank you guys all for being here. All the commissioners, I really commend you for stepping up. It's going to be a good experience. I know we're going to have some great energy on the youth commission. So, make sure you engage with the city. If you need something from the city, to be able to, you know, have some maybe, some advance or some, like, come and do presentations, just let us know through whoever. Who's going to be the staff representative at those youth commission meetings? Kwanah Boy? So, make sure you introduce yourself to her so that you could know what the schedule's like and, you know, be able to come up with some ideas as of now, okay? Oh, all right, there you go. All right, folks. So, thanks, thank you to everyone for being here and thank. Ooh, gela.
Since the, the young ladies came about the, the crossing, the signs and the crossing over there on El Segundo and, and Inglewood. Actually, the South Bay Cock has been working on this micro-mobility. And, and yesterday, they gave us a lot of information about e-bikes, you know, the safety and, and the pros and cons, and about safety and crossing. So, I would like maybe to invite that, the South Bay Cock, the micro-mobility project to come and give us a, a presentation, Vaughn. Potentially, maybe next meeting or, or in November. And also, yeah, the South Bay Cock micro-mobility project, okay? And also, I would like also for these ladies to give us a presentation, because I, I met with them and they came to the Senior Resource Fair called Generation Connect, right? Because they want to connect, you know, the teens with the seniors to make sure that the teens will teach the senior how to use computers, AI, smartphone, et cetera, et cetera. So, I think it's a good match for the seniors and teens. So, if we can have them do a presentation, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good night.
It is adjourned at 9:19.